Hoy caminando por la calle pensando que voy a hacer con mi villa. Mi corazón está sufriendo y yo cante mi guitarra y yo toque a frente los estrellas. Yo no quiero a sufrir. Yo no quiero a morir. Yo no mao, quiero vivir. Yo no quiero a sufrir. He encontrado el amor en la música. Familia y la de esperanza. Acostilla solitaria. Mi corazón está sufriendo y yo cante mi guitarra y yo toque a frente los estrellas. Yo no quiero a sufrir. Yo no quiero a morir. Yo no mao, quiero vivir. Yo no quiero a sufrir. Ahora no sufre, canta mi música y mi vida es feliz. No quiero a morir. Yo no quiero a sufrir. Yo no quiero a morir. Yo no mao, quiero vivir. Yo no quiero a sufrir. Yo no quiero a sufrir. Yo no quiero a morir. Yo no mao, quiero vivir. Yo no quiero a sufrir. Yo no quiero a sufrir. Yo no quiero a sufrir.
A tiny boy got pushed, the bully gave him hell. The bully ripped his shirt. But the story's got revenge, it's got justice. It's got something even sweeter. This tiny boy grew to take on police and watch in turn. This tiny boy grew to be Henry B. Gonzalez. Henry B. Gonzalez. Henry B. Gonzalez. Henry B. Gonzalez. Henry B. Gonzalez.
Se me hace interesante los detalles de tu piel. Al pelearnos sin respuestas en el baño, en la fiesta. Y enseguida me tocas.
Good afternoon. The time is 2:02 PM on Wednesday, November 2nd, 2025. And the city of San Antonio B session is called to order. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Councilmember Corr. Councilmember McKee Rodriguez.
Present.
Councilmember Viagra. Councilmember Mungia.
Present.
Councilmember Castillo. Councilmember Galván.
Here.
Councilmember Alareta Gavito.
Here.
Councilmember Mesa Gonzales. Councilmember Spears. Councilmember White. Mayor Jones.
Here.
Mayor, we have Corr.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we've got a, it's only two items, but they're going to be pretty meaty topics. One is the pre-solicitation briefing for rental housing production, as well as an update on the Ready to Work program. The first one, obviously, is all about how we are continuing to incentivize and make sure that we've got the right kinds of affordable housing projects in our community and how we think about that in certain parts for which we are looking to revitalize. And certainly that requires affordable housing. And then the Ready to Work program, there is a the need to approve the board to make sure we've got the right leadership there. Before we did that, though, I wanted to make sure that this council had an opportunity to review kind of where that program stands. Certainly, it still is set to sunset, sunset, rather, by 2030. But there are many, many resources still left in that program and how we can, how can we ensure that it aligns with the objectives that this council has in mind, both in terms of efficiency and effectiveness. So Eric, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So our first item, as the mayor mentioned, is a pre-solicitation briefing on affordable housing, gap funding, and specifically two different programs. And let me provide some context for the council. A hundred, the voters approved $150 million in housing bonds in 2022. Approximately $129.5 million of that has been committed by the council and through previous solicitations to produce or preserve about 5,000 homes and households through multiple funding rounds. Today's presentation is really y'all's opportunity to kind of weigh in on that solicitation process and take feedback from you. There are two RFPs that Veronica will cover. One is for rental housing production, rehab, preservation, and acquisition. And the second one is homeownership. And we will, Veronica will walk both, through both those programs, including the criteria that we've used in the past. Some of it has been adjusted based on recent council conversation. And I suspect as we get feedback from you all, we will further adjust the solicitation so that we can push it out and bring it back to you next, next year in 2026. So we'll start with Veronica and let her kick it off.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I am Veronica Garcia, Director for our Neighborhood Housing Services Department. Today, we will provide a briefing on our annual requests for affordable housing projects. This effort does build on our past funding rounds, which reflect our continued commitment to addressing housing affordability in our city. Through your support and the support of our partners, we have been successful in bringing more affordable housing to our city in areas where people want to live and with the type of high-quality housing we want to see. So gap funding supports both the creation and preservation of affordable housing in alignment with our Strategic Housing Implementation Plan, and it helps guide development toward our community's priorities. This funding, what it does is it helps close a financial shortfall between the project costs, what it costs to build, and what traditional financing and the project revenues can cover. It's really the critical piece that makes a project possible. This annual solicitation process utilizes both federal funds as well as our 2022 housing bond funds. Gap funding can be used for construction costs, acquisition, financing, soft costs, as well as infrastructure. Applications undergo a very competitive selection process. We are not just looking to build units. It's about building high-quality housing in key areas where people want to live for the people who need it the most. This year, we do have two RFPs, one to create and preserve rental housing and the second to create new homeownership opportunities. All of the projects that are recommended for an award will come back to council for full consideration. This is the timeline of our RFP process. We started last month with discussions with a subcommittee of the Housing Commission, and I will share what their feedback was. We briefed the Housing Commission on our solicitation process last month, and they were supportive of staff recommendations. After today's B session, we will open the RFP on December 2nd, and it'll be open through January 16th. We will then proceed to evaluating proposals. Once again, brief Housing Commission and full council in a B session, and then final awards will be considered in April. So I will describe, we have two different RFPs for this round of gap funding. We have a total of $16.7 million available in both bond and federal funds. And for this solicitation, we will again prioritize projects that have at least 15% of the units affordable to households earning 30% of the area median income or below. And in San Antonio, that's about $26,000 for a family of three. With both RFPs, we will invite partners to bring projects that align with our housing priorities, looking for projects that are shovel-ready, that are located near amenities with services for the residents who live there, all in the aim of creating long-term affordable housing. For our rental housing solicitation, we have a total of $14.4 million, including $10 million in housing bond funds and $4.4 million in federal home and CDBG dollars. For homeownership, we have about $2.3 million. That's all from federal CDBG dollars. And any funds that we identify through council projects who can't continue or any federal program savings can be made available through this solicitation, or we can use it for strategic land acquisition with council approval. So I'll go into details of our rental housing. This round, we are combining applications for new rental housing or rehab of existing housing. This is because in previous scoring rounds, we had these as two separate solicitations. What we found a couple of times was that projects may be presenting both. They may be acquiring and rehabbing an existing rental property and then wanting to create additional new units on site. And there was challenges if they didn't know which one to apply for. And with different scoring committees, different application processes, a selection process, that got complicated. So in our last round, and so we're again recommending in this round that we combine them into one solicitation so we allow development teams to be as creative as possible where they want to rehab, create new housing, or both. And the scoring committees will be guided to try and include both rental projects for consideration as well as rental rehab, since we do have both pots of funding available. We will again be looking for projects to have at least 15% of the units for families at 30% AMI or below. This is in alignment with our ship and ensuring we're creating more deeply affordable units. A location will be considered and prioritized this round. We're looking for projects that are within the urban core or projects along our green or silver via lines. And the scoring panel will include subject matter experts from internal departments as well as external stakeholders. And since we are including housing bond dollars, we'll be including two members of the Citizens Bond Committee. We again will be looking for projects to not just request city funds, but how they will be leveraging other funding. Maybe that's tax credits or other private funding sources. And for all new production projects, we will be conducting a displacement impact assessment, which really looks at the neighborhoods surrounding the proposed development, helping us understand what the vulnerability factors and giving that information to the scoring committee before any funding decisions are recommended. For the homeownership category, we have a total of $2.3 million available. Again, this is all federal funds. This category prioritizes projects for families up to 80% of the area median income or below. And since we have the least amount of dollars available in this funding category, if we do identify any additional program savings or council projects, we would recommend prioritizing additional dollars in the homeownership production category. we would recommend prioritizing additional dollars in the homeownership production category. As mentioned, our team worked closely with the Housing Commission, which created a new subcommittee that helped advise our team on potential updates to our funding-related project and our gap funding priorities. In consultation and through recommendations of the subcommittee, they're recommending that we continue to prioritize universal design and making sure the homes that we are creating are accessible to people of all ages and abilities. And we also continue to prioritize family-sized units, which is homes that are two or three bedrooms or more. They did ask that we consider exceptions for projects that are rehab, such as historic preservation projects. While those do tend to offer to do universal design where possible, sometimes it's based on the existing project that may not be financially feasible to meet all of the universal design criteria. So we want to make sure we have flexibility for existing projects. In addition, the committee recommended prioritizing developments that are within half a mile of Via's green or silver line. Our previous criteria required developments to be within a quarter mile to receive priority through Via, and they were part of the discussions. They recommended going up to half a mile because that is still opens us up to more sites along the lines. We're also asked to consider, which we do, projects that are along frequent transit lines, to have more frequent service, or even those that are within a Via-linked service zone. And then again, we will continue to look at projects, not just on how many affordable units they're creating, but how they're supporting residents living in those communities in the long term. So example priority projects and services could be high-quality pre-K, as defined by pre-K for San Antonio, and maybe any other assistance, such as maybe guidance with rental assistance programs. The evaluation committees for both RFPs are comprised of a diverse group of subject matter experts. We have representatives from the City Manager's Office, from our department, as well as city staff from homeless services and the Historic Preservation Office, Public Works, Planning Department, Development Services, as well as the Department of Compliance, Opportunity, and Access. Via, once again, will be helping us evaluate the proposals and really looking at where projects are recommended and whether or not they do meet that proximity to transit and how frequent the transit is. And then finally, for the rental project, since we do have bond funds, we'll be including members of the Community Bond Committee. For the gap funding scoring criteria, we're going to utilize, we're reflecting the council-adopted housing bond parameters as well as the Housing Commission's evaluation framework. This is the same scoring criteria we've used in previous rounds, and we've noted how the priorities that we've heard feed into each of the funding categories. The scoring criteria that has the most points is for deeper affordability. And again, this is the second time we're requiring projects to have at least 15% of their units at 30% AMI or below. Of those 30 points, I think it's important to note that five points are set aside for projects that have either income-based housing or public housing incorporated in the development. They could do that with housing vouchers or other types of financing tools that really tie a person's income to the rent that they pay. So for projects that do not have this public housing or income-based housing component, they could only receive a maximum of 25 points for that category. In addition, we'll be looking at projects, if it's shovel-ready, how much funding it's requesting from the city versus other private sources that are being leveraged. We're also going to look at how projects are being designed, where they're located. That's up to 15 points. So this is where we'll be having priority points for family-sized units, for projects that are located in proximity to transit, as we described earlier, for projects that may be located within the urban core. And this is also where universal design levels come into mind, as well as the sustainability features a project may be incorporating that go beyond our traditional code requirements. To give you some history, other projects that have scored high in this category have things such as highly reflective or solar-ready roofs. They may have EV charging stations on site, and they may be using zero-scaping or other low-water usage landscaping, such as recaptured rainwater. So those are the types of things that can get higher points in these types of solicitations. In addition, the development experience we reviewed, so we're looking for how the development team is structured and what their specific experience is with creating affordable housing projects, also locally. And then we'll be looking at up to 10 points available for projects that incorporate additional protections for residents and/or amenities and services. And again, that's where you can see priority points may be available for projects that include things such as a high-quality pre-K. Finally, projects that have a nonprofit partner can receive up to 10 points. And in this funding round, we do not have any inclusion of small-business points or local-preference points because of the inclusion of federal dollars. Our affordable gap funding evaluation process is very comprehensive and well-rounded. With council approving each and every project, we have been able to support a wide range of impactful developments, including both rental and homeownership opportunities. A total of 10 developments are located within the CRAIG, which represents the original 36 square miles of the city. That's how we kind of put some boundaries around how we're defining urban core in this solicitation. This focus on building housing in the urban core brings many benefits. We're able to leverage existing infrastructure and houses people closer to transit, jobs, and essential services, which really makes housing even more affordable in the long term. These 10 developments represent 747 homes, of which 62% are deeply affordable, and a total of nearly $25 million in just city investment for these projects. Next, I'll provide kind of an overview on our housing bonds. So to date, our housing bond has, was approved by voters back in 2022. And with the funds that we've already committed so far, we can expect about 5,000 homes that have been supported. Of those 5,000, about 2,200 are already complete, another 1,400 are under construction, and the final 1,300, most of those are as part of the funding round just approved by council this past summer, and those would be in the pre-development stages. A total of almost $130 million, so just over 85% of all the bond funds are committed. And again, the pre-solicitation today is recommending using the remaining bond funds for either gap funding or strategic land acquisition. For every $1 in bond funds that we've committed to projects, we've been able to leverage an additional $7 million in either federal, private, or philanthropic funds invested here in San Antonio. We have completed a total of five rounds for housing bond projects, and we have about $20 million remaining. So through this solicitation, we're recommending to use $10 million in the rental housing category. And then the remaining $1.5 million is out right now for a competitive solicitation for community land trusts. This creative model will use bond funding for nonprofits to acquire and hold land, which will then ensure long-term affordability for owners or rentals. So it's a creative strategy in the ship that does have bond funds set aside and dedicated, and we'll be bringing back to you those funding recommendations in the future. The remaining $9 million is proposed to be used to support the implementation of the Strategic Housing Implementation Plan with a focus on strategic land acquisition. So today's proposal of $9 million will be used for land acquisition in partnership with the San Antonio Housing Trust. Last December, City Council approved the Transit-Oriented Development Framework, and many inquired about how we can use our remaining housing bond funds to acquire land along the green line or the silver line. The remaining bond funds can be used for this purpose, and the property acquisition recommendations will indeed come back to council for final approval. The land acquisition opportunities will indeed follow the same parameters that the housing bond has attached to it, meaning we'll be looking for future projects that are built on the land, have to have at least 15% of the units as deeply affordable. They'll have the same long-term covenants as our other projects. And we will be looking for properties specifically along those target areas. The funding of that $9 million, it's important to note, $4.2 million is in the permanent supportive housing category. So we can expect that that funding recommendation will include a property acquisition that may be for future supportive housing project. Again, all of the projects, before any acquisitions are finalized, those recommendations would come back for consideration. So in closing, I wanted to provide an example of strategic land acquisition that we funded through the previous 2017 Neighborhood Improvement Pond. This was a collaboration between the city and multiple partners, including RSA, the Housing Trust, Opportunity Home, Franklin Development, and SAM Ministries. The project will result in 80 affordable and supportive family-sized homes. This development is currently under construction and on track to open in December. This project is a powerful example of how strategic public investment, strong partnerships, and thoughtful planning can deliver lasting impact. This reflects our commitment to affordable housing in areas of opportunity. We've layered project-based vouchers for families that are experiencing homelessness along with state low-income housing tax credits, which really helped our city dollars leverage even further. And you can see 100% of the units in this housing community are affordable, including 16 units up to 30% AMI, and the remaining at 50 and 60%. The whole project is family-sized units, meaning they're all two- and three-bedroom units. And again, it's a, it's an example of how we can use bond funds to purchase land now in a key area and then build a type of housing project that are in line with the priorities that we want to see. So that concludes my recommendation, my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Veronica, for that rundown. I'm going to go through some of the questions that I've got. And just for my colleague's edification, when she said on Slide 5 that the, this, the request for proposals follows the criteria established by City Council, she means the Council, City Council of 2022, right? Not necessarily our, our inputs, obviously. On Slide 9, Veronica, just so we level-set, going into some of the other comments from the, from the council. In prioritizing developments within half a mile of the, of the green line and silver line, can you share with us what some of that discussion was and how some of that was data-informed to help us understand what increasing that, that radius would do, both in terms of supply? But also, one of the things we're obviously very focused on is, is density, right? And making sure that we achieve that, that right level. So can you talk to us a little bit about the conversation around going from a quarter of a mile to a half mile?
Sure. So the committee really wanted to ensure that we were able to open the solicitation up and get priority points for a larger number of parcels that may be along the green or the silver line. There was also some discussion around where the transit stops are located, since that has not yet been defined for the silver line. The stops themselves were not prioritized, but instead, we decided to keep the preference around the green line, the silver line. And most committee members, and Via was a part of those discussion, agreed that a half a mile within the line seems to be a reasonable distance for most riders and to be able to access the transit along the line.
Was there difficulty with finding enough land when it was only kept to a quarter? I don't take the bus, but I would imagine like walking at the half a mile is probably not ideal for most folks when, in some places, it only comes around once an hour, right? So hence, hence my question about how do we understand the benefit of this in light of kind of the real-world time and potential challenge it adds to that person's day?
Sure. I mean, yes, it could potentially be a longer distance, but I think there are limited options, especially for those larger developments of what parcels are within a quarter mile of the line. So again, wanting to try and have as much flexibility as possible. It doesn't mean they, they couldn't go even further out. They just wouldn't necessarily get the priority points in this particular solicitation.
So what you just said there is really important, and kind of for follow-on discussions when we're talking about changing criteria like that, to be able to say, hey, by going from a quarter mile to a half mile, we were able to identify, you know, X number more plots that support a higher-density level of construction. Those are the kinds of things that I think really help us understand why, why something makes sense that might not, might not be intuitive to us. And on that last bullet, just for, for everyone's edification, when it says continue prioritizing resident services with a priority for onsite high-quality pre-K, prioritizing and incentivizing are synonymous, right?
Right.
Okay, good. And it's not for you to answer. I know in our, in our pre-brief, this is a discussion, a larger discussion, Eric, for us to have with, with Dr. Bray about, I mean, frankly, not unlike other major cities where pre-K is, and childcare services are more integrated and dispersed in communities, right? We don't have kind of like one large big site throughout, just a handful of those. You know, I think Peteric mentioned it actually, based on his, his, the France example. I've got my own example. When I lived in Germany, these are, these are just much more integrated into the community, and they're more accessible. So the way in which we might have Dr. Bray help us understand how it couldn't, no kidding, be pre-K for, say, in some of these facilities would, I think it'd be helpful for us to kind of challenge our assumptions about how we provide that and the, the utility of doing so. On the scoring criteria, Slide 11. Thank you for laying this out, and for me explaining where there is some discretion actually in this, more so than might be apparent when you look at this slide. And for me, the discretion is important because that, sometimes it's in that nuance where folks are competitive, think they're competitive, and they're not actually not competitive, right? And so can you describe again the discretion when it comes to affordability? And how the commission looks at, assigns points, rather, on the, the scope of the projects that have been, that have answered the RFP, rather, and not, not a kind of a one-for-one, as we were talking about in our meeting? So if you'd just elaborate on that, because I think folks, that wasn't clear to me.
So for the affordability category, the max points a respondent can receive is 30 points. There is a five-point set aside for public housing or income-based units. So if a project has maybe project-based vouchers that are in that project, they could be eligible for the full 30 points. If they do not have those income-based units, they could get a max of 25 points. But really, those other 25 points are at the committee member's discretion. They will be looking at various factors, and we do get a variety of different types of projects that are submitted. Some have a focus on a special population, like older adults. Some are more family-focused. And we get unit, projects of all different sizes. So that threshold, a minimum of 15% at 30, that could be a completely different number of units based on the project size. So while some projects may go, oh, I have 20% at 30, it could be a really small project, and at the end of the day, only have 15 units at 30% AMI. A bigger, more dense project may meet our 30, 15% threshold and still be providing 45 or 50 units at that 30% AMI. So because projects are so different, unique, they're in different parts of town, they're looking at different populations, different sizes, we really do leave most of the affordability points at the committee's discretion so they can evaluate what they think should receive the maximum points. Again, but there's, is that five-point set aside specifically for those income-based units which adjust to a person's income at the time?
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that, because that discretion is really going to be based on who answers the RFP. And that discretion could look different from, you know, who answers this RFP versus who answered a previous RSVP, RS, RFP, excuse me, versus who would answer a future RFP. So just to level-set for my colleagues, that discretion is, it's kind of like you take a test, and your grade is actually based on everyone else taking the test, not how well you actually answered the questions on the test, if that makes sense. Did I can't answer that, capture that correctly?
I think so. And I'll also just note for the committee's benefit that the committee also has the option to not award all of the funding, and they have done that when they've received projects that maybe weren't as affordable as they thought the funding request made sense. And so there's always that option, even though they may score well, to not award all the funds if the projects don't, aren't competitive.
Right. And this really, Councilwoman Core's amendment last week really kind of got me thinking about what that approach would mean in this context. Because as we described, based on how this is set up and the discretion that the committee has, you could not have, for example, two RFPs both get 100 on the test.
I guess you could have that, but we would really have the committee looking at how they would be differentiating the points from one project to the next.
Right. However, if two folks got 100 on the test, right, how then would you differentiate after that?
The final funding award. Well, it depends on how much each one is asking for, and if the committee could, if we could have enough money to fund them both.
Yeah. So, and I say this because us understanding where the discretion is helps us understand where we can do exactly what Councilwoman Core's amendment did last time, which is not change the test per se, but rather be very clear about the points that we're awarding for certain parts of that test that we think are important, and certainly, the affordability piece of it is. And so my, my concern, and I welcome- And so my concern, and welcome again comments from my colleagues on this, is that when folks are not super clear, that if they go over the 15% threshold for AMI, doing that at 25% or 35%, it's not clear exactly how much more that strengthens their application, potentially disincentivizes them from doing so, right?
You're right, and I would just make sure we're all clear that for smaller projects that do go above that 15%, they may have a higher percentage of their overall project at 30, but that may result in a lower number of 30% units overall compared to like a more dense project.
It may.
It could.
But it may not.
It may not.
Right.
We don't know.
That's right, okay. And that's why that clarity about when you get points and when you don't get points is helpful so that we can get more of the kinds of projects that are potentially a higher level of that deeper, that deep affordability level. Because the other piece where there is some discretion, right, is in the development experience. Is that right?
Yes.
To level set for everybody, how are those 15 points allotted?
Sure, we usually look at the, again, all of those 15 points are completely discretionary to the committee. So they'll look at the makeup of the development team, how long they've done affordable housing, specifically affordable housing-type experience. They may take into consideration how many other projects they've done in San Antonio, the size of those projects, do they have experience with resident services? What are the services? It could also be experience with other city dollars that have been awarded. Did they have to come back and ask for more dollars to get the project done? Did they get it done on time? All of that can be taken into consideration, all those different types of factors under development experience.
Yeah, I appreciate that, cost, schedule, performance, absolutely. I always want to make sure though, that when we're incorporating something, especially that has discretion and is specifically tied to, as you just described, hey, how many projects have you done in San Antonio? We are inadvertently giving a leg up to those that have already done this kind of work and potentially excluding those that would be right to do this work and for whom we want to frankly, increase competitiveness in this, which always helps to drive down costs. Okay. I was thankful to understand that the last two, nonprofit status and veteran-owned, those are pretty straightforward.
Right.
The, on Slide 15, the permanent supportive housing. For everyone's edification, what was the analysis that went into showing that this is not an area where we would prioritize for the RFP?
On the permanent supportive housing? Because we identified that entire 4.2 million to go to strategic land acquisition. In the last funding round, we did put out the 4.2 million and we just didn't get any responsive. It's usually when we give awards for PSH, they're 10 million or more. So we're incentivizing both the construction of the units and the operational of at least the first one to two years, and we just have a little bit of capital dollars left.
Okay, thank you. And in case anyone has the same question that I had regarding the, as we are trying to achieve density, this potential kind of counterintuitive approach to the 9% tax credit, right? I don't know if you were able to find the answer to that before, between now and then, go ahead.
Yes, so the state doesn't limit the size of the tax credit, but they do cap the annual tax credit allocation award, which is $2 million a year and they can use that for 10 years per project. So that means the actual financing tool will only generate $20 million in that development. So could they go bigger? They could, but they have to present a financially feasible project, knowing that's the financing tool. And so if they go bigger, construction costs bigger and the operating costs go higher. And all of those are not necessarily eligible costs for the state consideration.
Got it, and the background on that, I was asking, even in all your pictures, but as we drive through town, most of these projects are four stories, five stories max, right? So trying to understand what was causing that. And as Veronica mentioned, she thought it was tied potentially to the tax credit, but it is not that. So it sounds like this is another area where we have an opportunity to be very clear with folks about the type of density that we're looking for in these projects.
We can, but the 9%, because of that particular financing tool, most developments are going to propose a project size that that financing tool can cover. If they want, if we would want a more dense project, we can ask for that and just know they'd have to explore other financing options.
Okay, got it, thank you. Councilwoman Spears.
Mayor.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, please.
Just back to your first point about the question about the quarter mile versus half mile. And as Veronica laid out, previous solicitation said quarter of a mile. Do you, I just want to make sure I'm ascertaining your questions, because I think maybe a suggestion would be while we are proposing to prioritize half a mile, maybe we extra-prioritize quarter of a mile. That way, there's a bubble there. And going back to your test analogy, give them extra credit within a quarter of a mile and just a little bit of credit within a half a mile. Does that kind of hit the point that you were?
I think that's a good compromise. I think we do want to make sure that, you know, we're taking into account that the intent is always that they're connected, they're still taking public transit.
Yes, yes.
So appreciate, yeah, that's a very good recommendation, thanks Eric.
And I'll add some clarity that the Transit-Oriented Development Framework listed half a mile as the boundary from the zones themselves, the transit lines, and they looked at about approximately a 10-minute walk. So I think we're trying to align with that, but definitely can look at more priority the closer you are to the line.
Councilwoman Spears.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you Veronica for your presentation. I had quite a few questions on this. My first one is, I see on Slide 9, you're speaking to multifamily or family-oriented, but I am really concerned about the affordable housing for seniors. And I'd really like to see a way that we can encourage incentives for our seniors for affordable housing and also persons with disabilities. And the reasoning is because many times, they don't have another opportunity to create income.
True.
So I have a lot of concern that we aren't looking closely enough at what kind of housing we can do for our seniors.
Sure, Councilwoman, thank you, and I'll clarify that we do, in the RFP itself, we identify you could get priority for multiple types of housing and housing specifically for older adults is a special population that we call out, as well as persons with disabilities. And there's multiple categories, but with the committee feedback was specifically that we should really only be offering priority points for family-sized units if it's not an older adult community, because they may not really. We don't want to penalize older adult communities saying, well, you're serving older adults, but you don't have family sizes, like that's not fair, that wouldn't make sense for that type of development. So to keep those kinds of exceptions in mind when we're awarding those priority points. I hope that clarifies.
It does, I just don't think it's still meeting the mark for me. I still think it's, there's a big gap there, because we are prioritizing the family-sized units so much. So then you mentioned on Slide 11 that since we're using federal dollars, the beta cannot be, the local preference can't be included there. Is there another way that we can prioritize local contractors and businesses?
I think it goes to our earlier comments on development experience. What is the experience, you have experience in San Antonio? And what proposal are you doing for our, to piggyback on last week's discussion? Most of the projects that are receiving our funds are layering other types of funding, which could be federal dollars and/or state dollars. And with the state scoring criteria, it's really a requirement that they use local contractors. So we too look at just the total package of what's being proposed and that's the development experiences where those points can be considered.
Well, that's good to hear, it segues into something that I have concern about. Are we looking at the property history and their impacts on the communities when we're doing the scoring? And I guess what I want to specifically talk about is, are the tax dollars we're using, I want to make sure they're subsidizing properties that are not negatively impacting communities. We have one of the three developments that is on the UTSA Crime Reduction Plan. It's in Opportunity Home Property, it's the Rosemont at Highland Park. And then recently in September, we had the incident with the woman that died in her apartment at Wheatley Park, and that also is Opportunity Home. And I just don't feel like affordable should be low-quality.
Absolutely.
And this is a concern, I think we need to be tracking that kind of thing and crime data, and are they impacting their community in a positive way? It's just got to be looked at, especially when we're talking about, what did you call it? The assessment? The neighborhood assessment, what did you call it?
The displacement impact assessment?
Displacement assessment, impact assessment. We want to have a positive impact, we want people to be lifted up out of poverty, which, I mean, that should also be a target that we're looking at. Are we using poverty data in our scoring model to target communities that are the most in need? Another point I'm concerned about is, are we making sure that when we integrate these childcare centers, how are we, what's the oversight for that? How are we making sure that they're safe, that the families are getting quality childcare? It's just such a complicated thing and I want to make sure it's quality. And if we're not tracking how things are going right now in our scoring metrics, then I have concerns about that.
Sure, and to answer your question, we do part of development experiences. How has this particular development team, how have they done in the past with city dollars, even other developments? We also, I put this slide back up here so you can see, we have someone from Development Services that's on the scoring committee and they do help advise and let us know if there is a development team that, even if there's, because some of these, they could apply for rehab. So if that project is on the proactive apartment inspection list, we would take that into consideration, maybe even disqualify refunding. Doesn't mean someone couldn't, a new owner couldn't buy it and fix it. We wouldn't want to necessarily incentivize a negligent landlord within billing them out with city funds from a situation. So all of that, it's why we do have such a diverse scoring committee so we can make sure we get that input where maybe our team doesn't have all of that background code data, but our Development Services team would.
Okay, that's really good to hear.
And then for the childcare, I'll add, we are following the same standards and we did have lots of conversations with pre-K for SA. And when they are identifying a partner, we're requesting them to have National Association Education of Young Children Criteria Accreditation. So we can give you that backup information on what that pre-K for SA standard is. They don't have to use pre-K for SA, but it's certain standards that they recommended. And then we do have staff that helps with compliance, so we do check these projects, depending on the size, every year or minimum every other year. And many of them that are layering state or federal funding have additional checks and compliance that they follow under.
Okay.
But we're not just relying on that, our team is also checking.
Okay, that's good. And then you may have said this, but on Slide 10, will bond committee members on the evaluation panel have voting authority or is this advisory only?
The bond committee members are voting.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I want to clarify the point though, that the Councilwoman made in terms of some of the properties that may actually qualify for some of the rehabilitation. The, where there is crime, that doesn't necessarily mean some of these places wouldn't qualify for rehabilitation, correct?
Correct. Just because they have crime on site, it's more the property management. Is the property managed, proactive apartment inspection, if so, why? If they are, are they on a positive path? So those are all things that we're at least aware of where they stand from a code citation issue.
Right, exactly, because I want to make sure, I mean, that we're cognizant of the fact the ways in which these renovations may actually help to decrease crime.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Councilwoman Mungia.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Veronica for the presentation, it was very informative. I think y'all are doing a great job. In the presentation, you mentioned the FAIR Subcommittee. Can you elaborate on what that stands for and what it is that they're doing and who makes up that Subcommittee?
Yes, it was a Subcommittee that the Housing Commission created to help review our scoring criteria for both the low-income housing tax credit resolutions that we looked at last week, as well as the, as well as this gap funding scoring criteria. It stands for Financing Affordable and Impactful Housing Resources, FAIR Subcommittee. The members included members of the Housing Commission, including the Commission Chair, Katie Wilson, Michael Reyes from Opportunity Home, Pete Alanese from the Housing Trust, Kristin Davis-Davila from Merced. We had Michael Taylor from Habitat, as well as a few for-profit housing, affordable housing developers. So a pretty diverse Subcommittee that helped inform our process. All the meetings were open to the public, so we listened to feedback from that as well.
And I think that's important to note, especially when we, you know, make changes or want to continue something, that it's not necessarily just, you know, you on the office, it's people that are actually also doing some of the projects themselves or having to apply for financing or on the permanent supportive housing side of things. I think that's important. And I think we're really fortunate to have, you know, $16.7 million in this economy to invest in housing right now. So that's part of the Housing Bond, of course, which is a really great program. And I think soon enough at PCDC, we're going to do a culmination of the Housing Bond, once that's been expended, kind of look through all that. And then also, you know, it's the middle way of ship coming up soon. I think the five-year mark is coming up, so we want to make sure we're on target with all those things. And I think when we do the backup materials to share with the rest of Council about these projects, adding some of those things that people have been asking about is really important. So, you know, each project has been awarded what point level they were, I think, is important, out of 100, that will, you know, add to that. The other partners on the projects, I think, you know, Opportunity Home and the Housing Trust have been great partners on a lot of these things. And so some of them wouldn't work out unless they were part of that project also. So I think it's important to note, and which ones got light tech and things of that nature would be really helpful. And I do think that, you know, those of us that are on the Housing Trust, and I've seen this go on for some time, I think the partnership has really elevated the quality of housing that we've seen. There are a couple in D4 that are not even finished construction and they're already, I think, pre-leased 100%. Because people are just so interested in living, they're needing a place to live. So I think that's really important. And if you do not expend all this money in this RFP round, what is your plan with the remaining funding?
Sure, so we could always do another round. Each round gives usually fewer dollars and makes it harder to award gap funding for projects that may meet a lot of our criteria, but maybe do have a larger gap. We could always consider, which is why we have a set aside for strategic land acquisition, is maybe any funds not awarded, come back for strategic land acquisition. It's really a very unique opportunity to acquire land in a target area and they'll work very closely with the Housing Trust to set those project parameters that we want to see and then build exactly the type of housing community. And if there's a special population in mind we want to serve, we can make that part of the criteria. If there's specific services, we insist on that, could be part of the criteria. With these, each funding rounds, it's very competitive, but we're limited to whatever is actually submitted for consideration.
Yeah, absolutely. And you wouldn't necessarily need an RFP process for land acquisition if it was remaining funding?
No, we would look to the Housing Trust to make recommendations. If the Housing Trust Board approves those recommendations, it's not the final say, it would still have to come to the full Council for approval.
Okay, got you, that's really great. So the land acquisition is solely with the Housing Trust?
Yes, they are looking at potential sites.
Excellent, excited to hear about those. And I also support the compromise that was discussed earlier about trying to have some, you know, micro, you know, a lot closer to the line, I think is important, some preferential points. I will note that in some cases, like in D4, the height requirement also has, based on the Air Force Base in my district, so I couldn't build very tall next to Military Drive. So I think some of those considerations should be listed when we talk about the size of the property and how tall it is and all that.
Sure, I think you make a great point, Councilman. Some of the projects are designed with a lot of neighborhood input and maybe what the density and trying to be cognizant of maybe single-family homes that are nearby and then building kind of a mid-sized development that, you know, maybe would be accepted by the community, still provide affordable housing. So all that is stuff that we usually take into consideration when evaluating proposals.
Yeah, some would say too much input, some would say too little input, so, depends on who you are. So that's all for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Andrete Gavito.
Thank you Veronica, you always, you and your team always do such a phenomenal job of making sure that we have all the relevant information. I just have three quick questions. Do we have, I fully understand that there's so many of these projects still in concept phase, but do we have an idea of how many units this 16.7 million would get us?
Sure.
Or a range?
Sure, based on previous funding rounds, homeownership will be a lot less. Usually, we're incentivizing anywhere from $50,000 to $75,000 per unit, especially since all we have is federal funds. So that may get us maybe about 30 units, since we only have about $2.3 million available for that. For the rental, rehab and production, production usually needs higher incentives than rehab, not always, but usually, we estimate we could do anywhere between 300 to 400 units. And it really depends on the gap each project has and how many units that they're proposing.
So 30 units for housing and 300 to 400 for rental? Okay, interesting. And also too, do we have, all this information is great, but do we have any even preliminary timelines on when we can start seeing some of this? Or we're just waiting for other things?
Yes. So they wouldn't go for actual consideration of approving awards until April. Shovel readiness, their development timelines is something that we score. So we're looking for projects that are designed, sometimes they're already permitted. The fastest turnaround we've had is a project that was awarded funds in December, closed two weeks later, and broke ground three months later.
Okay.
It's a record.
So assuming the, you said when are you going to do the?
In April is when they're expected to come to council.
So like, let's just say that April, so we probably wouldn't see any of this really start happening until 2028?
Yes, these projects aren't going to happen for a couple of years.
Got it. That's, that's.
Be built and ready to move in.
Right. That's what, I was trying to just wrap my head around that. Thank you. And then also too, kind of to piggyback on what Councilwoman Mungia was saying, you know, I like the strategic partnerships and like, thinking about like Lone Star Development, you know, it's on the, I believe that's on the green line. You know, I'm glad to see that we're looking at those types of partnerships too, because I think that's fruitful, not only to meet this need, but it's also impactful for the city as a whole.
Sure.
Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gavon.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you Veronica for the presentation. As said, always great work. I generally feel good with the gap funding RFP, along with the remaining funds, kind of focused there with the strategic land acquisition. Overall, I wanted to ask some questions, I guess, about what's next after this, right? And just, I know it's always a large question about what's going to happen with the funding, what's going to happen with potential future bond. But I guess before those things happen, you know, once, if everything goes well, and then all these RFPs are taken up, where do we see the next steps for the ship, or for NHSD, or for our city to keep moving forward on the ship specifically?
Sure. So we, we're working with a consultant now to look at the five-year mark, as Councilwoman Mungia mentioned, to see what the recommendations, do we adjust our housing goals? Maybe we adjust them within the AMI levels, depending on, you know, realistic looking at our funding we have. We're also working with the Housing Commission Removing Barriers Subcommittee. So while we are nearly out of housing bond funds, we do have federal funds every year. It's usually only about what we see now, which is six or $7 million, so very limited. So then we turn to what can we do from a removing barriers to creating housing? Maybe that's one thing we've been asked to explore, is density bonus programs, other policies. We'll be coming to council next month with recommendations to add more city fee waivers, increase the limits there to help, again, incentivize more housing. So while dollars may be limited without another housing bond, there are other tools from working with stakeholders and just making it an easier process overall, to see what we can do. And we're working with a couple of consultants to look at those strategies.
Got it. Thank you. That's helpful. Something was brought up earlier about the kind of types of housing that we're creating with this. Do we track an inventory about the kind of types of housing, not necessarily in terms of affordability, but in terms of senior units or accessible units, in terms of universal design units, or number of family units that are available in our city, or even with the specific focus on affordable units?
Sure. Oh, great. So, okay, thank you. We do track units for older adults, specifically because that was a goal in the ship specifically.
Right.
So we have that information, as well as permanent supportive housing was another goal in the ship, but 1,000 units is the goal in the next 10 years. We're about halfway to the mark. For older adults specifically, we have, the goal was only 1,200. I didn't want to mention that earlier for Councilwoman Spears, because it's part of why we're recalibrating the numbers.
Sure.
Is that enough per the ship goal of 1,200? We're done. But we're never done. So part of relooking at that and understanding what more focus do we need. So we do track some of that information, but not necessarily number of family-sized units, or some of the other themes talked about. We can look at that.
Got it. I think that'd be, if possible, right? I think it's always in terms of what's available to us, in terms of the data out there, from non-affordable or non-subsidized units. But also, I think just, it would be helpful to look at that kind of real-time to see where we're at. I think the same thing for other kind of work that we're doing in the city, when we look at moving the needle on different issues. This one, I think, is always helpful. If we're able to check that data, I think that'd be interesting to see how that could be done.
Okay, thank you.
On the point about the bond, or the future of another bond, this question I think may be more for Eric. Do we, are we going to have that conversation about bonding capacity in terms of timeline, if it's sooner than later, or later than we expect?
Yes, sir. Councilman, I think it's either December 10th or December 12th, whatever that B session date is.
Got it.
We plan on giving you all an update from the August conversation about some of the financial assumptions we've been utilizing, we've been stress testing some of those. So the second B session in December.
Got it. So I'll hold those comments back for then. Glad to hear. Last thing I wanted to mention, though, I think, kind of regarding that, is that I think it's still very critical that we find ways to continue to do gap funding. And I think to your point Veronica, right, looking at the fee waivers and other kinds of things that we can do. But in terms of actual financing, I'm always interested in figuring out ways that we can do any kind of larger, or maybe not larger, but separate revolving funds that we're able to utilize from the city. I don't know what that looks like, but I think it'd be interesting to see how the Housing Trust could continue to embark on those efforts, so that way there is the kind of funding mechanism outside of the bond cycles, especially as we're looking at our bond capacity. Are there ways that we can create that fund? I think it's something that I always am interested in seeing how we can get done, and always open to be helpful in that effort. So those are my comments there. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Cor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for this presentation. Mayor, I thought about a lot of the things that you mentioned too regarding the rubric, and we had this conversation during our briefing too, on whether or not being, we're so prescriptive on the letters of support that we talked about last week, and then on this one, we're really not prescriptive at all. And we leave it up to the discretion of the review committee. So we had this exact same conversation. And I grappled with some of the challenges that you were discussing as well. And so I think the challenge in this situation really is we don't know what we're going to get. So if we limit it too much, it is hard to really allocate, or really decide what offer, I guess I should say, which projects you think would be best. But the one idea that I've been thinking about is, in some of our solicitations with the small businesses, we mention goals at the top. So thinking about how, when we couldn't do CBA points anymore, we couldn't add priority points for minority and women-owned businesses, we put them as goals on the top of the priorities. And so I know we list high-level ones for that here, and that's, is that, it's like similar to what we're doing with, within a half-mile of via, things like that. Is that the similar idea?
Yes, or we, we have pri, these are the things we're prioritizing, these are the things that we're looking for in the solicitation. And then with a note that that category falls under this point criteria, and here's the maximum points you could get for it.
Got it. So we could put in like the note that Eric mentioned, like half a mile is, half a mile gets priority, and higher priority for quarter mile?
Sure, yes. We can note that. We can give that guidance to the scoring committee as well.
Okay, great. I think that would be great. I looked at what half a mile is, though. I was just thinking about the green line. And so I live within half a mile, and I'm like, I should be able to walk. It's a nine-minute walk, but, you know, it's so basically, if you're thinking about the green line, it's like Blanco to McCullough. And I do like that it opens up Blanco and McCullough if we do half a mile, because there's a lot of plot there that could be potentially looked at. So, but yes, I understand the push there on walking distance. The other thing I wanted to add is, regional centers would also be a good priority for that. I know that would help some of our South Side and North Side colleagues too. So if we could add that, is that already in there?
We do have that as a target area, too.
Okay, great. And then, so timeline, I've been thinking a lot about the timeline. Is this ti, do we tie this because Lytech applications are due at the beginning of the year, or is this time, is this fixed timeline, where we do this for every year? Or how did this timeline come about, I guess?
Sure. It's, it's not necessarily fixed to Lytech, because they're not going to know if they're getting their tax credits. They don't find that out till July for the 9%. But we'll be able to know if they applied. We'll have a general idea for the scoring committee on where we think they scored, although there's always surprises. But really, it's in the interest of the federal dollars. We just got those awarded, although with the shutdown, we don't physically have them yet, but we know how much they will be for this year. We just got that approved for October, so this month. And then we have that, always that cognizant effort to ensure we're awarding and spending federal dollars as soon as possible.
Did we get less CDPG, or was it similar?
I think our CDPG dollars was, was right around the same, maybe a 1% or 2% increase.
And we just lost home, though, right?
Well, home went down a little bit. Yeah, but it was pretty level compared to previous years.
Okay, that's good to know. So the only reason I was thinking about the timeline was like, especially for the single-family homeownership, is it sufficient timeline for folks that might be, because the rental rehab folks, they're, we know who they are. They're already planning this. They're, well, for the most part, right? But the single-family homeownership, I feel like that's a little bit more unique of, and developers that might not be traditionally in the pipeline could consider if they knew there was dollars for that, right?
Yes, I think that is all CDPG fund, and that's probably the dollars that we want to spend as soon as possible because of our CDPG timeliness test, which happens in July of every year.
Okay. Okay, so I guess my question then is like, the, I focus so much on rental rehab, but on single-family homeownership, do we give extra points for community land trusts, so if they're going to give the, if the nonprofit's going to own the land?
We, I'm not sure our RFP specifically says community land trust, but we can certainly consider that. And then we have the separate community land trust RFP out right now.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
So are folks applying to both separately, or?
They could.
Okay. And for the single-family homeownership, I looked up, so 80% AMI is about, for a family of three, about $1,700 rent. So that's approximately a $200K home that we're looking for, right? So are folks saying that we're going to build these level homes and ensure that the families living in there is 80% AMI? Is that all they basically have to prove?
Yes, and most of the homes that we've incentivized with each of these solicitations are selling for around $165,000 to $180,000. And the nonprofits that have been awarded the funds do look very carefully at income qualifying the families and ensuring they meet that income, because that's how we awarded it, based on, these are the families you're targeting, 80% AMI, and some of them are even at 60% AMI.
So that was going to be my question, because if you don't have like, you could potentially try to go buy a $180,000 home, but if you don't have a down payment, and they're not receiving any kind of financial support, it still may not be possible. So do we kind of bridge the gap to see if it actually goes to someone, or are we just looking at the house value?
We are looking at the developers' income qualifying the family. In many cases, okay, I think I can go ahead and highlight Habitat for Humanity, or even Opportunity Home San Antonio. They may have their own incentive programs to help families with down payment assistance. In some cases, they are also connecting them with our down payment assistance program. We have down payment for families at 120% AMI, but we also have a program specifically for 80% AMI or below. And that can offer families up to $30,000 in down payment in closing costs.
And then for rehab for homeownership, we don't require a DIA. Is that because we're expecting the family that's living there to continue living there?
Yes, we don't, direct displacement disqualifies you from housing bond dollars or our federal dollars. And since the home is located where it is, we can't really, we could assess the vulnerability, but it's meant to give the scoring committee input before those awards are made.
Okay. Last question on the homeownership. Have we ever considered allowing for condo use?
I think it would be eligible. I can't say that we've gotten any proposals for that, though.
Interesting. Okay. Just maybe if we specify it, because if someone is trying to build a multifamily, like a four-unit, like going back to the density point, right? If someone's trying to build smaller units, but that would still work under homeownership, and they could still sell them for maybe $100,000 each in a larger fourplex, I think that would be an interesting model that if we specified, it would be open to it.
Sure. We can note that we're open to creative models such as, you know, maybe some detail.
Always comes back to missing metal housing, right? And then the last couple of questions I had for just the rental is, I was thinking about prior, like points and such that we're providing, well, I lost my thought on that. Oh, okay. So I'll go to this point. Councilwoman Mungia mentioned the review of all of the projects that have gone through. And I think that's really important. I think, I'm looking at numbers, right? So we've done 5,000 from the housing bond. The San Antonio Housing Trust since 2011 has done 10,000. But I know there's some overlap there, right? Because
Sure.
Some of the housing trust units are similar to, are the same ones receiving housing bond dollars. So it'd be great, like, I love the ship dashboard, y'all know I love it, but it would be great if we could identify overall in the community with all of our partners, who has developed what, and maybe there's like an asterisk if it was a housing bond or something, so we can see the impact
Sure.
overall, since in the last, since ship has started, of what the impact was. But then the other really big thing I struggle with, and this goes to the, the dollars that you guys have set aside for land banking. I used to sit up here and be like, land banking is the best thing. And then I saw how hard this Lytech process is, and I'm like, we cannot land bank 9% deals. It is just not worth it. And so I have shifted, and I've shifted my perspective on that, because if we're hoping that the state is, if we're hoping anyone else is going to give us money, we should just not expect to put dollars there, right? And so unless we can do 4% deals, the 9% deals, we shouldn't land bank. Anyways, all of that to say, I love to figure out, what is the per-door cost of a 30% unit if we're just funding someone else to do it? What is the cost, the additional cost to do universal design? How much are we putting on the developer? Like, if we want to do universal design, how much would that cost? If we want 50% ADA units, which the Housing Trust asks for now, how much additional are we asking to put into the deal, right? I'm trying to break down what these specific costs are, so then we can have a discussion. Would we, if we have to give up 5% ADA units but can get another 10%, 30% AMI units, would we support that? And that's a tough, because money's unfortunately finite. So that's a conversation I think we haven't had the ability to do. We just say like, these are all the priorities. But I think even when you come back with this, if you can come back to us and say like, these are the different things that we saw in terms of costs, because it's also tricky, because they can say whatever they want for how much money they need. So it's really hard to differentiate what a 30% unit costs. Anyways, maybe we can have a consultant or someone figure that out, but I'd be really interested in that. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks. Thank you, Councilwoman. To that point, right, well, actually, let me just, the, the idea of understanding how much each of these things that we're asking for are going to cost is, is important, and we should absolutely have that, because it dovetails nicely and enables then to also allow us to have a more strategic conversation about the TERS, right? Resources that we are foregoing, that in theory could come back and do exactly some of this stuff, right? Okay, great. Councilwoman Mesa Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions. Thank you Veronica for all the work you and your team are doing. I think we really do stand out when we think of what other big cities are doing with affordable housing and housing bond dollars. So compared to Fort Worth, Dallas, Austin, we're doing a lot. So thank you for everything that you and your team are doing every day. I just had a couple of quick questions on, I think it was Slide 8, on the, the additional funding for homeownership. I know we hear a lot about more rehab and more multifamily, so just if you can kind of expand on that point, on why that's going to homeownership production.
Sure. So we only have 2.3 million set aside. That's mainly because all, the housing bond only had 5 million for homeownership, and we've allocated and committed all of that. So all we have left annually for homeownership is federal dollars. So this year from our federal dollars, we have about 6, 6.5 million total between home and CDPG. So this is the amount of that that was set aside for homeownership production. We really prioritize the federal dollars for rental, because we need more 30% units, and those only come from the rental. So it's a set aside for homeownership. We want to continue incentivizing homeownership because that's generational wealth.
Yeah.
We don't have a lot of new housing product that's being built in this price point without our incentives. Really don't know who else in the community that's building housing, starter homes for families. So we want to continue to incentivize it. And that's why we mentioned that, while it is a limited funding amount, if we do identify some savings in federal funds from other projects, we would prioritize this category.
Okay, great. And the, I think you mentioned the assistance you all offer, the HIP, I think it's called, HIP 18, or HIP 80?
Yes.
How many folks come through and ask for that assistance?
Yes, so.
Do you have a breakdown of that?
Yes, we have the, I'll have to go back and see, I think, how much we set aside from our federal dollars for HIP 80. And again, it's for 80% AMI or below. I think it's around $200,000 to $300,000 a year that we have for that down payment assistance program. We also utilize general fund dollars to offer down payment assistance for families that have higher income, that's 120% AMI or below. So in total, every year, we set aside about, I think it's maybe 800,000 or 900,000 a year between those two down payment assistance programs. And I have to get the breakdown for each one.
Okay, awesome. That's really it. Just, I did just want to make a reference to, but this is through their Housing Trust, but I recently visited Valor Hill Apartments. So really unique, creative project, honestly. And so able to support our veterans, and I think that's important. So do you have any specific projects we're working on when we talk about veterans? we talk about veterans, or multifamily veterans, or?
Some veteran-focused housing communities, I'm not sure that we have one that comes to mind specifically for veterans, that we've used our incentives to.
For, okay, okay, that's all my questions, thank you so much.
But we do note in the RFP that that's a special population category, yes.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Mungia is also leading the task force that is looking at increasing the options for certain kinds of groups that traditionally have been underserved when it comes to affordable housing, so veterans, in particular, those around the VA, that's right, LGBTQ youth, seniors, and those with disabilities, so for your edification, yeah. Councilman White.
Thanks, Mayor, I'll be brief, I think my colleagues covered it. I want to begin, though, by just thanking city staff, this morning, we were at the ribbon cutting of a, of a new project, affordable project in District Ten Village at the Loop, and it was a project that actually took about five years to get done, and really remarkable, Prospera, Galaxy Builders, the city and the county was involved as well, and it really took a collaborative effort from, from a lot of, it can be good, thank you, Councilwoman, yes, it can, and it was, it was great to be there, and our, our city folks were instrumental in making it happen, so really enjoyed that. My only question is this, is the city tracking any outcomes related to broader community benefits from affordable housing in terms of local job growth, workforce participation, other economic indicators reflecting, you know, community benefits or neighborhood improvement?
Sure, I don't know that we're tracking that data specifically yet, but we can look at that as part of our SHIP recalibration and see what data there is available, now that we have five years of tracking our affordable housing investments, and we know exactly where our city dollars have gone, and what we've incentivized, and our specific focus on deeply affordable, I think we can look and see what data we can pull together to help highlight that.
You know, we, we all know sometimes that these are difficult projects to, to sell to surrounding neighborhoods. We, we all know this, right? And something my colleague mentioned earlier about how, how, just because it's an affordable project shouldn't mean that it's, it's low quality, right? And, and dealing with how some of these get really run down, and there's, there's bad things going on at the properties, to the extent we can make sure that that doesn't happen, and to the extent that we can make sure that we have data to show the community some of the benefits of these projects, I think we'll make it easier on, on all of us when we're talking to our residents about the potential value of an affordable project in our district. So that's all I've got, thanks, Mayor.
Councilman Vigran.
Thank you, Mayor, I thank you Veronica and team for being here today, I was, the year was two thousand and one, I was temping with the San Antonio Housing Association, and I remember the, they had torn down the, the courts right across from Hemisfer. And the engineers and architects and all those working in that office, because that was the office I was temping in, were like, how are we gonna fence the property out, what's going to come? And then we would see, we would be here, I'd be here now, twenty-twenty-five, and see how affordable housing, what that looks like, through Opportunity Homes and through, through the city's involvement, and the involvement of the San Antonio Housing Trust, which I'm super proud to be part of, so I want to thank you for bringing this pre-solicitation here. We know it's a housing gap funding, so we know most of them either have the housing lined up or depending, are depending on that four percent or that nine percent, and this is just the gap to get them over the mark, and I think what has happened since two thousand and one, and since we started making changes, is that it has been clear, whatever council it is, that we expect, we expect better and, and higher quality and opportunity, so I wanna, I wanna thank you for making sure that we have that as we look at this gap funding. The one thing I, I do want to bring back in terms of the slide, well, I wanna, I wanna give a shout out to slide eight, which was the Displacement Impact Assessment that I think Councilwoman McKee and I worked on early on when we, when he, when he came on council, to make sure that that was part of that, and, and what got us on the San Antonio Housing Trust. And then I want to go back to that slide eleven with the proposed gap funding. Well, I understand we want to look at the green and silver lines, I think we need to know where those green and silver lines go to, and then understand, and I'm gonna use this opportunity to, to talk about the actual walkability we have to get to these lines. In Fort Worth for the conference, and it's like, oh, yeah, I can walk ten minutes, no problem, that's not a problem, but when I'm having to cross, that ten minutes means having to cross a six-lane street, that, it, it's different. So I think that's when, when, when you are looking at kind of those points, and how we give those points, and how, do we max it out for the fifteen, do, what is the walkability in that neighborhood? And trying to get transportation in our advocates that advocate for cycling and for walkability is, is this in an area where people can walk and bike to the line? If it's not, maybe we, we, that's what gives them one less point, or one more point as we do that. So I think there's opportunity there, I do want to see most of those coming forward to hit that one hundred or that nineties, or well in the eighties, I don't want seventies, but I want to see them hitting high into these, these, these points as we, as we determine the gap funding, because we know how much, because they sit on the San Antonio Housing Trust, how much it costs to go door by door to do this. And then as we look at the cap funding in the urban core, as we move forward, I really think we need to ask and look at, because I love the idea of developing Lone Star with a, with a aspect, and developing any, any, anywhere within the downtown area with that aspect of affordability, but then understanding, is that for workforce? And does workforce want to work, do they want to live in the downtown area, or do they want that thirty-minute bus ride from downtown, or that twenty, twenty-five-minute car ride from downtown, or that ten-minute car ride if they're using a car? I think we need to start asking that and using our employers in the downtown area to start surveying their employees about where they're looking for, you know, what would, where do they, Brooks, which I love, and others are like, let's live, work, and play on the campus. If you work downtown, and as much as I love City Hall, I don't want to necessarily live, work, and play here, you know, there is sometimes you need a break, and so I think that's where we need to start, we need to start kind of asking, you know, what, what do we, what, what are, what are, when we talk about creating this workforce affordable and affordable housing, who are we doing that for? And I think it definitely works, I think we definitely have to communicate more regarding the success of permanent supportive housing, because again, I will echo that I think permanent supportive housing is the key, but you're right, four, four-point-two million, I think, was left, that, that's not gonna, I need way more than that, and, and you know that. So I'm looking forward to being successful in this housing bond, so we can bring another housing bond up in the next bond election, and we can see the success. I think y'all have done a great job of putting everything in the toolkit in terms of housing and, and affordable housing, and how we move forward, because with the amount of days that we, this government federally has been shut down, it is gonna make a fiscal impact, we're seeing it this holiday season already, and we need to understand that it might be a roller coaster like this, because even if it gets done today, and I'm, I'm checking my text messages just like everybody else, we, we may be back here in January again. So I, I'm, I've looked, I'm excited to hear the new council members' comments, but I think our, our role has been set, like I said, twenty-odd years when they decided to, to tear down the courts downtown and say, we can do this in a way where you can have a neighbor living in affordable housing and you have no idea that they are. So I'm, I'm very thankful for that and thankful for how we moved, and I, I look forward to see how we move forward, and thinking of creative ways about how we can use our TERS, and truly how we can buy down rents, because we're always talking at the housing trust, as part of it is, is making sure we, with the existing housing we have, we can get affordable. And, you know, Councilwoman Castillo is not here, and we constantly talk about, she calls it high density, I call it going vertical, but really finding out where that works within the city because of view sheds, and because of what, where we need to rehab, and also the construction, and we know that construction continues to be an issue. So thank you for your efforts, and thank you for this presentation, and I look forward to moving forward and seeing this, this, this SHIP goals and our housing bond be successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Miki Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation, and really fascinating discussion from everybody. I'll start off with the, just one quick point, and just regarding the Displacement Impact Assessment that Councilwoman Vigran just mentioned, which it was one of my, it was one of our first CCRs when we got elected, and I'm happy to see it being utilized. I do think we could be a little bit more effective in the way that we utilize the Displacement Impact Assessment for housing projects, specifically, I think we should use them during the score, scoring process, not necessarily after the fact. I also think we could probably utilize it as a tool during any of our economic development incentive program discussions and whatnot, and so I'd love to, you know, have that conversation later as a body. Second to that, I would wonder, is there a possibility to give a, I guess going back to the, if we go to slide eleven?
Sorry, Councilman May, add that we do provide the scoring committee members with the Displacement Impact Analysis before they make awards, and then we give them, let them know if it was low, medium, or high risk, all that's before anybody, well, they could have pre-scored, but it's made available to them in advance and at the meeting as well.
Well, that's good news, that's news to me, so I appreciate that. Looking at this, I think, going back to the point that the mayor was making, I do think there's value in, if I look at thirty points, if I'm on a scoring committee like this, and this is the priority that I'm given, I think there's a lot of discretion for how you score things, I mean, aside from maybe that five points set aside for public and income-based housing, I wonder, is there a way to have higher scores, looking at AMI affordability, for example, is there a way to give higher scores for low MA, for lower AMI at a greater volume and a greater percentage simultaneously? I'm not, join me on this, on my thought process for a second, so considering we're most behind on production of thirty percent AMI as we reach our SHIP goals, is there a way to be strategic in how we score based on both the percentage of deeply affordable units, for example? There's different levels of value, and ten units with two of those being thirty percent AMI versus a hundred units with twenty percent, or twenty of those units at thirty percent, but the amount that we, the amount of funding we would give to each of those is not the same? And so are they?
I know.
I'm, I'm trying to, I'm, I guess the question that I'm asking is how do we clearly prioritize simultaneously a greater percentage of deeply affordable units within any specific project and the greater volume that we're looking for? Because the volume is what's gonna get us to our SHIP goals, but we also want to ensure that anyone seeking public funding is prioritizing affordability at the level that we are, and so how would you, hearing that somewhat convoluted thought process, how would you recommend we describe that within the point breakdown? And I, I think what, what I'm looking for is a way to communicate this priority very clearly and give some sort of direction to the scoring committee as they're looking at.
Sure, yes, it, I mean, it's a, it's a challenging question, it's something we talk about at length in the scoring committee, because we see all of that, we see projects that, I'll, I'll give an example specific, this is an eighty-eight unit project, the whole thing is public housing, and they need nine million dollars. So it's a hundred percent deeply affordable, it's all income-based, probably would have scored a thirty in affordability, but the gap that that project needs is really high compared to the gap in maybe another project, maybe it is a three-hundred-and-fifty-unit project, and it meets merely the minimum fifteen percent threshold, but that alone is gonna get you fifty-five, sixty units for five million dollars instead. So it's something that we constantly kind of evaluate, we're also looking at projects that have a variety of unit mixes, so they may have, as was mentioned earlier, workforce housing units, which maybe not, isn't a bad thing, maybe it's in an area that needs more workforce housing, and they're using those workforce and market rate housing units to bring you up on your proportion of thirty percent units, or even more deeply affordable, or maybe that's what they're helping get the vouchers into the project. So it's a complex question, because every project is so unique, the one we highlighted earlier, San Pedro, four-twenty-five San Pedro, has twenty-five vouchers for chronically homeless families, so it had a big gap, we awarded over seven million dollars, it's a small project, but it meets a lot of the parameters that we were looking for in a project. So they're all so different, we did discuss, just like we have a five-point set aside for the income-based housing, maybe there's part of that thirty points as a five-point set aside based on your number of thirties, but we'd have to be very careful how we provide that guidance, because we wouldn't want to disincentivize smaller projects, for example, that may be layering those nine percent tax credits.
For sure, I'm wondering, is it possible to create something like a scoring rubric, rubric for affordability alone, like if you have, just that, I think talks about the different project types, so if you have, what's a small project to you that?
Less than a hundred units.
Less than a hundred units, a hundred, three hundred units, five hundred, whatever the, some sort of range, and then maybe within that, we can outline priorities for each of those types? But I would like to see projects, of course, have greater percentage of units at the deeply affordable. Do you think that's possible?
We, we could take a look at, I think the challenge is, we want, we have a diverse scoring committee, and we want to make sure we're allowing those committee members to utilize their expertise, evaluate each proposal, and really have that flexibility on how they want to score them, and score them against each other. It's possible to give a rubric to a committee member where they are required to give a project the maximum number of affordability points, but that could be yielding a pretty low number of units for the gap funding that that project is requesting. The challenge is, we, we just don't know what we're gonna get, and we always reserve the right not to award funds if, if we're not seeing what we need.
For sure, I think, maybe this is a, I think that conversation would be great if the chair of the Planning and Community Development Committee would like to more deeply dive in, I just refuse to believe that there is not some sort of formula, some sort of, something that can, that can do what we're asking. I just see Ian talking, so I wanted, is there something else?
Yeah, Ian reminded me, we did raise the minimum on the last scoring round, it used to be a minimum at ten percent, now we, we raised that threshold to fifteen percent, so we're already requiring all projects to do more deeply affordable units, that will result, we saw that on the last round, they have bigger gaps, because they're trying to meet that new threshold. So we have fewer funds in this round than we've had available in previous rounds, so that's also something to keep in mind, and, you know, we're, we're layering a lot of asks for our projects, because we're not just trying to do the maximum number of cheap housing, we're, we're trying to really incentivize quality housing in target areas.
Absolutely, and I think that brings me to the amenities and resident services. I know, for example, regarding pre-K, that's relatively recent, I think, in years that we've, we've seen projects come to council, and it's something that several of us are excited about, but then I wonder, what I want to, I guess what I'm wanting to have a conversation with there is that we've seen projects that have pre-K be generally accepted, but then we've seen pre-K that's associated with charter schools be a little bit less so, and less favorable, and so is that something that we as a council want to be a little bit more prescriptive of, that we mean, we want higher scores to applicants who partner with a local public, public school ISD for their pre-K? Because that's something I would be interested in.
Sure, we can share the, the write-up that we're planning to put in the RFP, which specifically says, it used to just say pre-K, and then we have had council feedback on looking for a higher standard, so that's why we've coordinated with pre-K for SA, and why we detail what that standard is, what those acceptable accreditations are, and trying to line up what, not just any pre-K, but a certain standard of, of pre-K education that we're looking for.
Gotcha, okay, that I think. Gotcha. Okay, that I think ties back to-
But that detail would be in the RFP.
I think I did hear higher quality. I remember the mayor emphasizing that point on Thursday. Was there something you wanted to say, Eric?
I'll wait till you're done, Councilman. I was just going to go back to your earlier point.
I think that's about it for me, other than when it comes to the land acquisition. You know, I have been in my land buying bag and so if there's any way that I can be helpful or any way that you could help me, I would love to, would love to be a part of that.
Okay.
Mayor, so I was just going to go back to your, your, your question about the rubric or the matrix. And I think the, I think the, the issue here is that we could do a solicitation for 30% AMI, easy. But we're trying to blend and find how we incentivize more affordability at the 30% and to get the maximum number of units. But it's also a mix. And I, and, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, Veronica, part of this is being informed by, just two years ago, we didn't do solicitations like this. We had never done solicitations like this. So we've kind of learned what the, what, what the process is and what the, what the products are that, that we get put in front of us. And, but I, but I also think that for the council's consideration down the road, if, if it is truly about deeply affordable housing, then we structure an RFP or a solicitation for just that, right? A lot of that depends on how much money is there. But I don't think it's as simple as the half-mile or quarter-mile example that the mayor and I were talking about. There, there's a way to prioritize it. And clearly you guys are saying, more than just you, are talking about whoever's got the most number of 30% units in a proposal should be given more points than the one that barely hits the 15% or 16%. And I think, I think you're hearing that loud and clear. But, but just food for thought down the road, if we want to start being a little bit more targeted in this sense with solicitations, then, then it's just a matter, I think, of, of being that, being more targeted and not so open and broad.
I know the clock's up, Mayor, but if I may, I am, it does, this does feel like money that we keep allocating during the solicitations and whatnot. We've done this before and it keeps coming back because projects are falling through. I am wondering if anything happens with this. What have we learned about that that is going to make this successful, I guess, is one question. And then second is, should anything happen that, you know, brings money back to the table for our future RFP? Do we just do that where we're very simple and?
I, I think we see, and correct me if I'm wrong, part of this, part of this is federal money from this year. Part of it is some money that wasn't allocated in previous solicitations, a little bit of it, I think. And then the rest of it was housing dollars we still had available. But if we go through this process and, and we have money out of the $16 million that we're not recommending, then I think at that point, that's when the council can have a conversation about during the post-solicitation of this process. Hey, hold on to that money. We want to do, go work on a proposal to do 100 feet from the green and silver line, 30% AMI. And then we go work on that. So it really depends on what you get in terms of the solicitation. But, but in every case, I think, every case, we've always had money left over.
In every case, we've always had, for rental housing specifically, more asks than money we have available. For PSH on the last round, we had such a limited amount. We did not get qualified proposals. And in the rehab, we have money still, mostly because projects have not been able to secure all of their financing or they were disqualified for other reasons.
Gotcha. I didn't write that down, that recommend, the, coming back to us later for that discussion. Could you make sure that in the post-solicitation, if there is money identifier, or money left over, or that you're not recommending, that that be something that council consider?
Yep.
Just because memories are short.
Yep, nope.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's why God made city managers. He will remember.
Veronica, to the extent it does help us for next time, this round, could we try within that 30-point bucket to, to do this incremental piece, right? So if we did five for at least 15%, 15% rather, at 30% AMI or below, and then, you know, plus five if you're at 20, and then plus five if you're at 25. And that, with that, that still allows 10 points of discretion for the committee. I think that gives us a good understanding of, of, right now, we're just kind of guessing how the market would respond. And it doesn't sound like we have to guess. We can in fact put it out and then the commission can still apply their discretion based on what is submitted.
We can look at that, Mayor. Again, I would just caution for smaller projects that may go beyond that 15% threshold. We may be scoring them higher and they may have fewer units.
What is your recommendation on the minimum, on the minimum number than at each of those levels? That would make sense. That, that gets to what we're, several of us have alluded to.
I would say that if a project is going beyond the 15%, maybe there is a set aside, but that we allow the committee to balance maybe the amount of dollars that they're asking for, which can maybe be considered affordability for that, for that increased threshold. I think what we have seen in previous solicitations, and Councilwoman Viagra alluded to this, most of these projects, they're just needing our gap funding to be feasible. They have applied for the state tax credits. They have other equity partners in line and this is the gap that they have. So if we want them to do more affordable units, it's possible, but their gap will be higher and we may or may not be able to afford that. So that's one consideration. But for the really more dense projects, the 300-plus units, for them to have more units at that 30% AMI and really go beyond that threshold, that gets more and more expensive because they need so many more to get be up to 20% for example, as a proportion.
I think it'd be helpful for us to understand how the market will respond and allow for the commission to help us decipher, you know, what makes sense. So I'd like to see what that looks like for, again, the five for the minimum of 15 and then the five for 20 and five for 25.
Okay.
Councilwoman Cor.
Thank you, Mayor. I had, as folks were talking, obviously, this is something that's passionate for all of us, but, and we really believe that you guys have thought about this a lot. So I think, just wanted to reiterate that we appreciate the work that you guys do so much and the Fair Housing Subcommittee. We're, to, it's a hard challenge, right? Like we want to incentivize people to get good projects, but I was thinking that they are themselves the ones saying how much gap funding they need, right? So could we go back and negotiate with them? And, because they're the ones that are identifying how much funding they need. So could we say, we received this project. If we came back to you and said, we'll give you an extra $10,000 for these 50% AMI units per door to go down to 40% AMI units. Like, is that something that we, we normally do or can do?
We do make each product go through underwriting. So we can look through with, again, with guidance from the underwriters, how much more a project would need to add more deeply affordable units. That's maybe one thing we could look at. And then we would have to come back to council with that additional funding recommendation. Or when we go to council, try and see what that additional amount could be that we would have the ability to negotiate for.
Because-
But we could look at options.
Yeah. So like to Councilmember Miki Rodriguez's point, right, with volumes, particularly for the larger projects that are, even the rental rehab. I know the smaller projects are harder on this. But, you know, when, it's for them, it's making the, the budget figure work out. So if we could say, we'll give this one project more money, but we're going to get more volume out of it, we might have a different discussion on here. So I know it's hard because y'all are bringing us, like what you recommend and we're like, can you bring us a midway point so we can give feedback? So I don't know if there's a way that we could, I, I don't know what the right way would be, but after we see what projects we get, if we can go back and say like, you know, or we could even do a side-by-side. Like, this is our discretionary points and this is a, let's just take the Lytech rubric, right? These are the Lytech rubric points that they would get so that we could see what the two results show. Like if we used our discretion and made recommendations, these are the rubric scores that you guys see. And then if we had a more fixed rubric like we do for Lytech, this is what they would score. And we could use that as a test on this, this round to see what comes back so we can then truly see the impact. I know that's double the work, but.
I'm trying to understand your recommendation is to create two different scoring criterias?
I think, Councilwoman, if I understand you correctly, so score based on this criteria.
Yes.
Create a potential new rubric.
And maybe we just use the Lytech one, so it's less work.
Okay, well, either or.
Yep.
And score on those.
Yes.
We would recommend based on what we've shown you today and then show you what that other would have done.
Yes.
Okay.
That was like, so that we can at least see and then have a discussion of like, do we want to shift it? What would the impact have been?
Understood.
Okay.
So to be very clear though, what I was recommending is that we actually let the market tell us what they, how they would respond if they were presented with, hey, if you did this, you'll get more points. If you did this, you also get more points. So being very clear now, so that actually helps inform if we wanted to do a separate one of these moving forward, well, we would actually have data. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have to, you know, hypothesize, right? So, but allowing the committee to use then their 10 points of discretion, to Veronica's point, hey, this is what it looked like. The committee might recommend actually it be a little bit different though, based on the, I don't know, unforeseen consequence or something like that, right? Just based on how the market responds. But I think it's really important that we see how the market responds and not, and not guess. So allowing the five for the minimum of 15%, five for 20, and then a five for 25, still allow, I mean, 10%, a third of that still being discretionary, I think is quite high and allows the commission to do their job.
I, I hear you, Mayor. I guess my recommendation was more like a, let's use this as a pilot so it still gives city staff the ability to move that forward. And is, I don't know if there's a way where we could put an asterisk saying, we're using this rubric in addition and city council have a discussion on it. I'm not sure. Just to like, keep that open to folks that are submitting and, so that they know that we're looking at what types come in. But I was just trying to figure out a, a balance that works. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks. Councilman Wongia.
Thank you. Definitely appreciate the conversation. I think, if you can go back to slide 11, please. You know, I think we have the benefit of looking at this from a very organized view on our side of the table, saying these are the points we want, this is what we want of a project, X, Y, and Z. The people looking at it the other side, of course, live in a much more chaotic environment and economy than we do, unfortunately. So I think it's a good discussion. I think what I want to focus on is, again, the outcome goals, right, that we have of this. So we're talking about the inputs and outputs of the scoring criteria. But I think we really got to, you know, I, sure, I think we should put this out there and if there's a point system that can, of course, prioritize 30% AMI, that's, that's very helpful. But I think we need to look at data, right? And again, this is gap financing. We've done so many other RFPs ahead of this, right, that probably looked different because of what was going on, right? And I think, especially with gap financing, they've already gone to their lender and they really already have an idea of what the AMI level is versus some of those other RFPs where they're building their project based on RFP, which is of course, a higher 30% threshold. So I think some of this definitely needs to come to the committee to discuss further and kind of compare and contrast what that is. But ultimately, the outcome has got to be more 30% units in general and it's going to meet our ship goals. So whatever that point system is, is, is going to, I think, have to follow the outcomes that we've been seeing. So I would just add that perspective for us too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Has everyone spoken on this topic that would like to? Okay. Oh, one more? Okay, Council, Miki Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. And I guess just to, so I realized a problem as I was thinking about this. And of course, we want to communicate to applicants what the rubric is going to be prior to them submitting. So I understand that. So I guess just based off of feedback, use whatever rubric or whatever standard you're going to use. But I would also be interested in if we could have an, if we can see exactly like what Councilman Cor was saying, maybe we take, so if, for example, you heard consensus that we want to see a higher percentage of units and we're going to give higher points for that, let that be the rubric. If not, let this be the rubric. And then whatever is the other option, I'd like to see what would have happened if we had changed it. That's exactly, exactly what Councilwoman Cor was saying. Let us see what would have happened. And in my, ideally, what I would hope for is that there's a stark contrast. I would hate to see it be like the same exact result. I think that would be very challenging for us to see, just as an experiment. But if not, then, I mean, I guess we have to find another way. But that would be, that, I guess, I just want to echo that. I'm interested in if we can see what happens with what council's feedback was today and then what would have happened if we used the alternative.
So I think it, it's important when we put this out to use a very, like, this is the rubric we use base our funding awards on or that the committee would use. And so if it's this one, we can use this one and we can have, as the mayor requested, specific points set aside for the proportion of units that go above 30%. We can, we could make that very clear in the RFP and give that guidance to the committee. We can then also use the other rubric to just kind of understand what it could have looked like, which may inform future funding rounds. And again, at the end of the day, it still comes to council for approval. So if this rubric does not result in projects that this council wants to fund, you always have the option to not fund all of the projects that the committee is recommending.
That's exactly what I'm about, so to be clear, I'm in favor of utilizing the rubric as outlined and as you just discussed with the mayor's proposal. And then what I would like to see as a result, in addition to that, is what would have happened had we not made those changes?
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sorry.
That will be, I will just say, that will be difficult because you won't know, I mean, they will have responded to the incentive. And if, it's hard to say how they would have responded if that incentive wasn't there, right? Just for-
Yes. But we will have the, the clear point set aside. If you do 20%, you'll get this extra five points. So those incentives will be very clear.
Absolutely, yeah, exactly. Great. Were you going to add something? Go ahead.
No.
Oh, head, Councilwoman.
I'm sorry to Sarah and Allison on your team. I have to do all the work on that, right?
No problem.
One thing that would also be helpful, Veronica, for us, I think, the developmental, development experience, as we're also looking at making sure we're getting a really healthy, robust list of suppliers in our community, I think we, I'd be interested at the very least to understand kind of who have these traditionally gone to in, in the community. Because again, if people are getting points because they've done it previously, then they're always kind of, kind of going to get a leg up, right? And again, we want to help ensure that this is as, as robust supply as it can be to bring down costs overall. So list of those folks, thank you.
Yes, we can give you the list, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next topic is, is Ready to Work. And as mentioned, I, I ask that we have a level set on, on this topic in general. One, because there was an ask to reconfirm the advisory board for another four-year period. Many of those folks have served for several years already. So just in the interest of making sure, you know, some folks that at the end would have served for like six or seven years, that's, that's quite a long time. We also want to make sure that the Ready to Work program is reflective of our priorities and our understanding of what's necessary. Again, I know this is something that stood up under, under COVID largely, but as we now have different aspects to this to include the incumbent worker program and the OJT program, and we have some data that helps us understand where this is, how this is performing, I'll just say, we can make sure that this is in line with the ROI that we would like to see or if we want to perhaps modify some piece of this. So over to you, Eric.
Thank you, Mayor. So as, as the mayor laid out, we are updating the council on the Ready to Work program. And towards the end of the presentation, Alex will go over the advisory board composition, reauthorization, and proposed appointments that have gone through the Economic and Community Development Committee. So just to recap, and you'll see a lot of these numbers in Mike's presentation, the, we've got 3,200 participants in approved jobs. That's a little bit more than a double, doubling of the placements in the last year. The average salary increase over $33,000 per, per participant is roughly in direct impact, $107 million in wages locally to our economy. The, the mayor mentioned return on investment. We are updating our return on investment analysis that was initially done five years ago or four years ago with the onset of the, the program. We've had 14,000 residents enrolled and more than 1,400 local employers who have hired Ready to Work participants. So we'll start off though, at the beginning of the presentation with Board Chair Ben Peavy of Accenture here locally, who will share some of his insights from the board perspective and progress of the program. We'll transition to Mike. And then, as I mentioned earlier, Alex will- And then, as I mentioned earlier, Alex will outline the advisory board part of this presentation. There will need to be some action taken by council before the end of this calendar year. So turn it over to Ben. Thanks for being here, Ben.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Mayor. Council members, my name's Ben Peavy. I'm a managing director with Accenture, been with Accenture for 30 years. I'm a lifelong San Antonio resident and have been very honored and privileged to be part of the Ready to Work program from the beginning. So I'm here, I don't know exactly, you know, I didn't have any prepared remarks or anything. But as Eric said, just wanted to let you guys know that, you know, I'm here. It's great to see some of our fellow board members here and our partners are here, as well as city staff. This is a very important program. This is a transformational program that is very uniquely San Antonio. I don't think there's a lot of other cities that would have approved a program like this to really help our most needy citizens. You know, we always hear the stats that San Antonio is still one of the most segregated, economically segregated cities by zip code. And it's very true. And I always look at the dashboard. And what's so great about this program is a lot of the people that are getting jobs are from our districts that are less economically advantaged, right? And but every district has at least 160 people that have gotten a job from this program, the highest over 400. And so, you know, I look at this program, one of the things that we've talked about from the beginning is we wanted to do something that helped our most needy citizens at scale. And it took us a while to get it ramped up, to get it started. But basically, we were starting a program that hadn't been existed, that hadn't, didn't have the partners, didn't have the training providers, didn't have the employers that knew what the heck we were doing. And now, looking at the progress that we've made, where we have over 3,200 people that have gotten a job, over almost 1,500 employers have hired at least one participant, that's pretty cool. And so, you know, I would just, one, wanted to start with gratitude and thanks for the council, for the mayor, for the, you know, all the support that we've gotten for this program. But I would also ask that we continue to make it better. Like, we are, we are impacting people's lives. We are impacting families and giving them training that is going to help them not only, you know, we talk a lot about, well, they're increasing their salary by $30,000, which is huge. That's just for one year. You know, extrapolate that for 10 years. And, you know, they're on a career path that they would have never been on before if they didn't get the training that they were provided through this program. So, you know, I've been very proud to be a part of this program. I wish there was more positive press on the program. You know, it's, it's really hard and I get to talk to a lot of our partners and board members and staff. And we're like, you know, especially for our board members, you know, this isn't our day job. Like, we, we don't get paid to do this. We're not, you know, but we do it because we know that there's a huge impact. And the way we take the hits, and we've taken a lot of hits, is because we know that it's impacting the people that are living in our community, right? And so we keep coming back. And I really appreciate our partners and what they do and the training providers, because they really care. And we see it. And so I just wanted to just share some of those things, share that, you know, the quote that I used at the Economic Development Subcommittee was, you know, Bill Gates, you know, most people overestimate what you can do in a year and they underestimate what you can do in 10. I think this is an example of that. This program is going to be an example of, we're already at 3,200 and you look at the projections and, and we're, we're doing better and better and getting more and more people jobs. But it's, we're also intentional and focused about the types of jobs that we're giving people, that they're going to be in demand. The thing that we're talking about from a board perspective is what's, what's happening with Gen AI? And pretty much so many of the jobs are going to be impacted by that. But look at the environment we're in right now with the economy and tariffs. And businesses don't know what to do from month to month. And this program has the ability to be very flexible and nimble to say, if we do see changes in demand or types of skills that our citizens are needing, we can make those types of changes. So that's one of the reasons why I feel like the advisory board is still very important, because we can provide that input. And we, and it's cross-industry. Like, this is a very broad, cross-industry program. So we need input from multiple people. And, you know, talking to a lot of the business owners, and I, I'm also part of the Greater SATX Executive Board and different meetings, and, and so many times I, I go into some of these meetings and, you know, I tell them I'm, I'm the chair of Ready to Work. And if they don't, most, most of the business, oh, I hear it's a troubled program and, you know, I'm, you know, sorry. And I, you know, I, first of all, I'm, I'm not surprised because that's what they hear. But then once we start talking to them about the stats and the impact that we're making, they're like, oh, that sounds pretty good. And then you fast forward now, and we have business leaders like Craig Borian from HEB and Dan Geddes. And, you know, all these other people that are like participating in our sessions of figuring out how they can get bigger cohorts. And that's the new model that Cots Metro was really pushing for of like, if we got the businesses involved earlier and specify the training for them, then we'd get them trained and into a job quicker. Well, businesses are actually taking the time and, and meeting with city staff and, and our advisory board to have those types of conversations and, and have their HR people change the way they do their hiring to, to look at Ready to Work participants that they never did before. So I'm looking at the numbers and you're looking at the businesses that are hiring more and more people. It's because of all the groundwork that's been done over the last two or three years. So I'll stop there. I can go all day. But if there's any specific questions, again, we have other board members here, we'd love to answer your questions. We talk a lot about this, but, you know, I just wanted to leave with the main message of, this program's incredible. Can it be better? Absolutely. Are we looking for ways to make it better? We are. But, you know, it's one of those, don't throw away the baby with the bathwater. That would be the biggest mistake we would ever make. So I'll stop there.
Thank you, Ben. Good afternoon, everybody. San Antonio Ready to Work. We always love to start these presentations with the reason why we're doing this, the people of San Antonio. So Trevor, Trevor started with Ready to Work when he came to the program, making $12 an hour, about $25,000 a year, roughly. He's now making over $55,000 a year with his new job as a respiratory therapist with Methodist Healthcare. He went to school at Alamo Colleges. His prime partner during the case management was also Alamo Colleges, which is a unique concept within itself that a higher education institution is reaching into the community through the Ready to Work initiative to provide intensive case management. It's going to have huge dividends for our community for a long time. But there are now thousands of people like Trevor benefiting from the investment the city has made in Ready to Work. Why are we investing in Ready to Work? We know that it was a different time when this program came about, during the midst of the pandemic. But the pandemic just kind of uncovered some stuff that was already here in San Antonio. These huge income inequality issues that the city still faces today. If you look at the darker areas on this map, those are the lowest income areas in our city. And on the left-hand side or the right-hand side, the darkest areas represent the lowest educational attainment levels. Those maps mirror each other nearly identically. And if you look at the column on the right, it shows the income earning capacity, the median income for our MSA with a high school diploma, some college, no degree, associate degrees, and bachelor's degrees. So the more education you get, the more money you earn, which is at the core of why Ready to Work is so important in our community. So our Ready to Work overview, what does it do? So we've got training, education, and employment, which is what the program is all about, is built upon wraparound services. The city have been partnering with Project Quest for over 30 years and tried to replicate many of the core functions of what made Project Quest great. And that was the one-on-one career coaching and the wraparound supports provided to help to make people successful. All levels of credentials are able to be awarded through Ready to Work, meaning short-term industry certifications, associate degrees, and even four-year bachelor's degrees. We know a lot of people have started school. Life happened, they had to stop out, want to help them to get back on board and get across the stage with those degrees. All aligned with employer needs. We have referrals. We are part of the Alamo Area Community Network, where referrals are made available through that central data platform for all types of barriers that people may face that our local community has answers for. Unprecedented in scale, unprecedented in collaboration. The central data platform updated every day on that dashboard. So you can really drill in and see how Ready to Work is performing. Employment services. So this area of Ready to Work, we know is essential for us to continue to make sure that people get access to good job. We have some really cool tools like the Pay it Forward internship program. I'll talk a little bit about, more about it later. Employer cohorts, we've been doing over the last year, working directly with employers to further align that training. And the on-the-job training and incumbent worker training programs, iterations that I'll also talk about in some later slides. So the money we've collected thus far, we're projected to collect total $234.9 million. With interest, it equates to about $250.8. And you can see our actual spending to date on the bottom column and our projected spending at the end of the program with the interest of $250.8 million. And program is currently projected to sunset in the year 2030, when the funds are expended. So our prime partners, several of them are here today. I have to reiterate, as I was, I'm always reminded by our partners, the city does not do the work directly. We do not case manage any participants. We do not enroll them in education and training programs. That work is our partners' work. And many of them are here today, Francisco from Project Quest, we've got Kelly and Jasmine from Story Education. They brought one of their participants, Selena, here. I heard Selena is also benefiting from the childcare pilot that council so graciously provided those funds for. We know childcare is an essential part of what we're doing here in workforce development. We have Tashina and Priscilla with Alamo Colleges. Adrian Lopez was here with WSA. I see Teresa here now today. So we're very thankful for our partners, for our prime agencies that are doing the work directly to help these participants to get those better jobs. Back in May of 2025, those four base prime partners, original prime partners, were added to with Goodwill and Hallmark coming onboard. And we believe that the historical success of Goodwill and the Hallmark known success of getting individuals placed in high-demand jobs here in San Antonio is going to help to bolster the program's success. So our dashboard, again, updated daily. Highly encourage you to check that dashboard out. It is a wealth of information about the program. It is updated every weekday. We've won a national award for data transparency for this level of insight into how the program's performing. There's 14,000 participants that have enrolled in training. When the original contracts were first issued for Ready to Work, the goals were very lofty and very high of 28,000 people enrolled in training. We're at the halfway point now with 14,000 people enrolled in training, which is pretty impressive in, you know, a short timeframe. We've got over 5,246 participants that have earned a credential through Ready to Work, adding to the educational attainment levels we talked about earlier for the city of San Antonio. 5,212 additional participants are in training right now. And 3,200 have been placed in approved jobs. Always have to give this disclaimer, the city has set a floor for what an approved job is. It's a floor. It's not the goal, it's just a floor of $15 an hour, full-time with benefits verified. And so that equates to why the city wants to make sure that participants in this programs aren't just getting any job, not just part-time jobs or temp jobs or contract jobs, jobs that don't offer benefits, but jobs that are going to continue to improve their quality of life for the long term. Which is a little different when how you see workforce data presented outside of the city's innovative approach to this. Job placement within six months, 57%. I told you that our dashboard is updated daily. As of today, it would up a percent. We have 58% within six months. And we're at 70% within 12 months. 1,467 employers hiring our graduates, average hourly wage $21.35. Coming into the program, the individual income of our participants is only $11,500, which is well below the poverty line. So we're helping those participants in our community who are most in need. About half of the participants who have jobs came to us unemployed. So we're really helping those people who can truly benefit the most from this work. And they're making about $44,700 with their first new job after the Ready to Work program, a $33,000 increase in salary. How much have we spent so far? About $94 million. We've collected 224 million. We're spending about $7,400 per participant, which is about $1,000 less than we originally projected when we built the first contracts for the program. So we're trying to be extremely fiscally responsible. We only pay dollars when the participants enroll in training. And we want to make sure that those dollars are being the most impactful for our citizens. So ROI, so of those, 13,900 participants enrolled in training, $33,000 salary increase, a $7,400 one-time expense is resulting in over $106 million in just increased earnings in our community over the next 12 months. That's more than we've spent so far on the program. The total program expenditure is, again, only $94 million through September and 1,450 employers hiring. And we have a new ROI study underway. It should be completed and ready for presentation and distribution by February of next year. And that study was shown, the initial study, a $1.7 billion return on investment over the 20-year working careers of Ready to Work participants. Intentional outreach, I talked about us helping those people who are in most need of this program. Over 1,700 individuals with self-identified disabilities, 1,700 military-involved, that's military transitioning service members, their family members, any dependents, justice-involved, nearly 3,000 justice-involved individuals that are reentering citizens, over 500 foster, former foster youth. And again, that median household income and intake, just over $14,000. And the typical Ready to Work participant is a single Hispanic mother with multiple children in the household. So the impacts of this work and that $30,000 increase in household income is going to have impacts on that generation as well. So the demographics has been talked about. Every council district has participants in need of this support. D2 and D5 are most impoverished districts by statistical income categories or largest enrollment within Ready to Work. And want to continue that outreach to make sure that every single council district who has a participant who can benefit the program hears about it and are able to reap the benefits of the support provided through this program. Our data shows that we've got only about 100 participants within our ranks that have an updated address outside of the city of San Antonio. And all of those addresses are still within the San Antonio MSA. I know there's been some conversations around participants who may receive the training and then may leave the San Antonio area. Our data does not indicate that that is occurring. And we are working with our third-party evaluator with the UTSA Urban Education Institute, who has some data from the State Texas Workforce Commission that can see where individuals are employed. And they're going to take a deeper dive into that work to see if any of the data that we have needs to be updated to show employment outside of our MSA. Employer-led training options, one of, one of the many innovations of Ready to Work is really leaning into the on-the-job training program. That's workers getting their first opportunity for employment with their new skills that are Ready to Work participants. Then come at worker training program, upskilling an existing workforce. Apprenticeships, the Earn as You Learn model that's on proven employer, employee retention, a cost-effective hiring program that reduces skills gaps. The cohort programs where employers can assist us in pre-selecting the training program and the candidates to help shorten that time, the job placement. And the Pay it Forward internship model, where we reimburse wages for six, wages for six-to-10-week internship programs to give those participants an extended interview so they can get into their first job. The cohort model, we heard from our employers that we wanted, they wanted to be a part of the process of number one, selecting which training programs the individuals were going to be trained in. And number two, helping to pre-select which individuals the city dollars were connected to, to put them through training in order to increase the likelihood of them being hired in the backend. We've had several companies that have taken us up on this. It's in its infancy. Only been doing it for about 12 months so far. But SOBC, Frost, SaaS, VIA, and Guide House have really leaned into this model. And we want to continue to expand that with our partners. I know Project Quest is a partnership with Methodist Healthcare to implement this model for patient care techs, to LPNs, to RNs, to help them upscale their existing and new workforce. We want to help them, the pre-screen participants on the front end, want to make sure that they align with talent pipelines that the preferred skills those employers actually need. We want to help to make sure that they are able to connect with those participants before they exit their training programs and they can understand what that interviewing process looks like, so they can more likely be hired in a shorter time period. Work closely with Greater SATX and the Talent Pipeline Management Cohorts that they're operating to help to get information from those employers and recruit them to put these cohorts on. And working with TriStar, a local staffing agency, to help with the placement process in order to make sure that we can connect as quickly as we can to these employers. Our on-the-job training model, we've got round one almost in the books, where we started off with $18 an hour minimum wage that the employers had to utilize to participate in this program. And we opened it up to whoever they wanted to hire. They didn't have to be Ready to Work participants. They could hire any new hire from the community and they could benefit from these dollars. In round two, we tightened it up a little bit. We increased the minimum wage they had to pay participants using city dollars, up to $20 an hour. And we also began the requirement that they have to hire Ready to Work participants. So those 1,366 participants that we're projecting them to serve in round two, that's FY25, Ready to Work dollars that are being utilized for that, 1,366 job placements we're anticipating from the on-the-job training program. And in round three, we've made another adjustment to increase the reimbursement of And in round three, we've made another adjustment to increase the reimbursement amount from $10,000 to a $15,000 cap if an employer will hire a reentering citizen, someone from a justice-involved background. We hear from our partners continuously that some of the challenges we have in getting people placed is some of them have backgrounds. So if we can get more employers open to hiring people with criminal backgrounds, we can increase those numbers. And we believe these OJT dollars can help to assist that in occurring. Then we have our incumbent worker training program. Incumbent worker training program, these are existing workers that we are assisting companies in upskilling and reskilling so that that particular candidate can be more valuable to that employer and it can lead to higher earnings. We haven't seen great returns in the wage increases thus far in round one. But we have a short window of sample size, about 18 months that those contracts have been in operation. We only saw a 35 cent increase in wages for those incumbent worker training participants. So we had some great feedback from the mayor's office, letting us know that, hey, if we want to make sure that our investments into companies are leading to additional wages for participants. So what we're proposing in round three is that we split the payments up. We're only spending about $1,350, $1,327 per trainee right now. But we want to split those payments up. So the employer will only be reimbursed for half of the training. These are reimbursement programs. When the trainee completes the training and earns a credential. And the other half, when that individual actually gets a raise or a promotion that has a raise attached to it, so that we can have a more direct return on investment for those dollars back to the city. And our program progress to date. It has been another year of phenomenal growth for the program. The first two and a half years of the program, we had 1,500 job placements. We've doubled that with over 1,600 job placement in just the last 12 months alone. Our training enrollments continue to be strong. We had a 12% year-over-year increase in applications, so we know the need is still there in our community. Our training completions have more than doubled since the first two and a half years of the program with 2,600 placements. We got that same number in the last year alone in training program completions. The completions continue to increase. The job placements will also be able to increase proportionately. And of course, our number of employers hiring participants has also continued to increase. So some of the things that have helped us to do that, of course, our partnership with Greater SATX and the Talent Pipeline Management Structure, helping us to be informed of what jobs are coming down the pipeline so we can then make sure that we are adjusting our training program accordingly. Enhanced employer engagement. Assistant Director Joe Morgan and his employer partnership team are conducting hiring fairs unique to industries. Working with employers individually to help them recruit from the Ready to Work talent pipeline, taking some of the mystery out of how to connect and engage with the program. And we have construction and manufacturing boot camps on the way. We know construction and manufacturing are two industries that are in great demand in our community and will be for quite some time. And so at the request of Mayor Jones, we have been working diligently to try to come up with some scenarios to get us a 90% placement within the 90-day timeframe. It is a very high goal, a very lofty goal. But us and our partners both want all of our participants to get a job as quickly as possible, 100% of them to get a job as quickly as they possibly can. So we have a couple of different options that we're looking at. Our current plan, which is an incremental improvement process, an aggressively refined target occupations plan, and employer job orders only, which we only listen to employers that tell us, hey, I need X, Y, and Z. We have some incentive agreements that are tied to specific jobs being produced here in our local community. And those three options are what I'm going to go into a little bit more detail here. So again, our current plan, incremental improvement. That plan is based off of retaining our best-performing prime partners. So our initial four prime partners, we had three plus one plus one plus one contracts with them. We're in the first option year, we're in year four of those contracts. And we want to make sure that we're able to retain the ones that are performing very well and are seeing that incremental improvement over time within Ready to Work as we continue to develop the entire ecosystem. Want to increase our employer-led initiatives, the cohort model, the on-the-job training and internship training opportunities. That applies to all of the scenarios. An employer commitment to hire, more closely monitored to help ensure that job orders are matched by actual job placements, meaning the OJT orders that the employers put in, they actually hire the number that they think they're going to hire when they make those projections. Enhance our academic career readiness and aptitude assessments across our prime partners. This is very important because we don't want to set our participants up for failure. We want to make sure that they're aligned based upon what their aptitude is, what their educational background is, and provide them with the tools, the remediation that's needed to get them on a career pathway where they're more likely to be successful. So if we can continue to do that work and enhance it on the front end, we'll get better outcomes on the backside. And a gradual removal of occupations and trainings that don't achieve the desired job placement rates. And I say gradual because our advisory board has been talked about, it's reviewing those occupations quarterly. That's one of their charges, to look at them every quarter. And we've taken a pretty conservative approach to removing occupations that aren't necessarily seeing the demand from local employers translating to job placements who are Ready to Work participants. But we're getting more and more aggressive in that approach with two and a half years worth of data. Some of the occupations had lower volume, but now that we've got more volume, they're able to make more data-informed decisions about which occupations to remove from the list. Just this prior board meeting, they removed about 10 occupations, a lot of them in the IT and finance sectors that we weren't seeing as much growth as we had hoped and as much placements as we had hoped for our job, for our participants in Ready to Work. So what are some of the strengths of that plan? We maintain the scale at about 5,000 enrollments per year in Ready to Work. We have improved employer-driven placement with the more focus on those employer-led training initiatives. And we continue to bolster the ecosystem with the collaboration that's happened with a broad array of employers across multiple job sectors and occupations. The weakness is the reason why Ready to Work is under so much scrutiny is the lack of stakeholder patience due to the slower achievement of 90% job placement within 90 days. And we've experienced this type of, this type of concern from the beginning of the program. When it first began, the question was, why aren't more people enrolled? Why don't we get, can we get more people in? Well, we've solved that problem. We've got more people into the program. Again, nearly 14,000 have enrolled. Now is how do we get a higher percentage of them placed in a shorter amount of time? And we continue to iterate, continue to put interventions in to try to achieve those goals. Scenario two is a more aggressively refined target occupation approach. Again, we got two and a half years worth of data. So we know which occupations are getting 90% in 90 days right now. Those occupations are bus and truck mechanics, diagnostic medical stenographers, paramedics, special ed teachers, and dental hygienists. They're all hitting that 90% in 90-day target right now, today. In addition to those, this aggressively refined target occupation would also include some that we know there's going to be a need for. Nurses are always in demand, RNs, LPNs, the manufacturing sector, we're seeing such great growth with JCB and Toyota. We'll have to make sure we continue to feed that demand for employment. And a construction of skilled trades, of course, with the bond program and other, the airport expansion and other projects that may be in the work with the housing bond. We're going to need construction of skilled trade workers continually. So if we use those ones that are already contributing 90% in 90 days, we add to it some ones we know are going to have strong demand for a long time here in our city. And we consider expanding that list of target occupation from not just the 90% in 90 days, but there are some different options. We can go 90% in 120 days or 90% within 180 days. You can get a little bit more capacity from what we're looking at with just this aggressively targeted occupations. So our first rough estimate of how many people we believe we would have in the 90% and 90-day aggressive approach would be about 2,000 participants a year. So you would shrink what that capacity would look like because there's fewer occupations that you're pushing people through potentially. You've got training capacity concerns that you have to have within, that you have to overcome. Hoping our training partners to expand those training pipelines to potentially mitigate some of that drop in enrollment throughout the program. We want to have a focused, the strengths will be a focused investment on training that only aligns with in-demand occupations within Ready to Work. It would decrease the time to hire upon training completion. And the narrow focus would increase the number of qualified candidates in proven in-demand fields. What do I mean by that? We know that JCB needs 1,300 people that they're committing to the hiring over the next couple of years. Well, if you take some of the other options off of the table, like for instance, CDL. A lot of our participants pursue CDL training tracks because number one, it's short. It's only four to six weeks in length. And number two, employers are hiring for it and they are very friendly for hiring people who have some criminal backgrounds. But if that were one of the occupations removed from the list, more people would move into the manufacturing pathway. And within that manufacturing pathway, if you get more skilled talent within that group, then that could solve a pain point for some of our manufacturing employers here locally. Weaknesses, some employers need, when I say some employers, because now you're restricting which occupations, you've got fewer employers on the list that may be hiring from those occupations. So fewer employers' needs will be met with fewer eligible occupations. The potential 6% reduction, again, in residents enrolling annually into training due to limited training slots, to a smaller number of target occupations, and a potential participant waitlist due to limited enrollment pathways, which is not unheard of. Like if you've only got so many slots, we would have to figure out how to prioritize populations, which priority is going to get to the top of the list, such as many of our programs do now. And then which will have lower priority based upon the criteria that our stakeholders come up with. And then the final scenario, the job orders only. So training exclusively tied to city economic incentive agreements, employer job orders, which also would include the OJT agreements, our cohort training model, and apprenticeships, because those are guaranteed jobs. We would have to coordinate closely with the Economic Development Department and Greater SATX to develop training talent pipelines related exclusively to existing and new incentive agreements. Replace Ready to Work target industries with SA, San Antonio Economic Development target industries. We're a little broader in our industries right now. I tell everybody, we cover everything except retail for the most part right now within Ready to Work. And it was intentionally, I think, set up that way to help as many employers as possible. And our Economic Development Department has a much more narrow focus on where those incentive agreements are tied to. So we would have to make that adjustment. Some of the strengths of that program, most direct alignment with employer hiring needs. Employer commitment to hire is codified through a contract hiring requirement. One of the criticisms we get about the employer pledge is that it's just a gentleman's handshake agreement. It's not a firm commitment from an employer that I'm going to hire X number of people, which is extremely hard to get. But these incentive agreements guarantee it. We also get it in our now on-the-job training agreements, where if they're going to get city dollars to offset their wage costs through on-the-job training, then they're committing to hiring Ready to Work participants. Immediate attainment of 90% within 90-day job placements for any new enrollments. Like the pipeline is going to be smaller, but for people coming in, it's a pretty high likelihood that you're going to get placed within that 90-day timeframe by going through this model. And I just have to make sure I make this point because currently, the participants, the 3,200 that do have jobs within Ready to Work, they get them on average in about 70 days, the ones who do have jobs. The challenge is the group that does not find employment because of the barriers they're facing, it takes them longer. So what we're trying to do is to find better ways to mitigate the barriers that the individuals who don't have employment within that timeframe, try to help them to overcome that and get employers that are more friendly to hiring that group so that we can increase that percentage. Some of the weaknesses to this model. Significant decrease in the number of participants served annually because we're now based only on the orders that are coming in from the employers. Program will take longer to hit the overall program outcomes. I talked about those lofty outcomes at the beginning. 28,000 people enrolled, 15,000 job placements. It'd be a longer trek, a longer pathway to get to those numbers. Employer-driven training start dates, so it's all about when those employer hiring cycles are, when the training start dates will be, which may not align with the immediate job needs of some of our participants. Employers hesitant to commit to hire. It's a challenge to get that level of commitment to them from a specific program. They have multiple sources that they hire talent from, Ready to Work being one of them. And employer commitments to hire, we have to closely monitor them again to make sure that their commitments match what our expectations are. And at this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Alex Lopez, Assistant City Manager, to talk about the board.
Sorry. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm going to start off with this slide, which, because before there was a board, there was a task force. And while some of the individuals that are listed on this slide, they're no longer with the organizations that are referenced, we intentionally left it the way it was to show the various stakeholders that helped design the Ready to Work program. It was their feedback that identified the need for the program in the first place. The fact that it should be providing tuition for certificates and for degrees, that it should be coupled with wraparound services and emergency assistance. That was the core of the program that they helped design. The task force also quickly identified the fact that there needed to be some mechanism by which to maintain that continued connection between employer needs and the skills that individuals that are participating in this program are going to be receiving, whatever type of training they were going to be getting. So that was, they made it very clear that that was an expectation that should be continued within the program. And that came to fruition. The mechanism that we did that through was the establishment of the advisory board. So the focus again of the board is to keep local employers and their demand for skilled workers at the forefront of this program. This advisory board is charged with helping to validate in-demand occupation data, maintain the previous mentioned alignment between training and the in-demand skills that they need. They also provide a recommendation to us as far as how many certificates we should be focusing on versus two- and four-year degrees. And then they also give us recommendations as far as wraparound services or emergency assistance that we should be providing participants that ultimately help them successfully complete their training. Altogether, they also serve as community ambassadors for us, like you've heard Ben earlier. That really is a very important role that they play for us as well. So in December of 2020, City Council established this board. And it was set to sunset at the end of this calendar year of 2025. And this was in alignment with the framework or with the timeframe that the sales tax would be collected. Our recommendation to date is that the term of the board be extended through December of 2030. We're also recommending the addition of two seats, one in the training provider or higher ed category, and one specifically for an applicant that has experience serving individuals with high barriers. And finally, we're recommending extending the term of the members of this board from two years to four years as well, just to provide us that continuity. The Economic and Workforce Development Committee was briefed on these recommendations during their October meeting and voted in favor of moving this forward for full city council consideration. So for reference, the top table in blue shows the current categories and the number of seats designated on the board. And then the green table shows the two additional seats that we're recommending, which would bring the total board composition to 11. So this is a quick snapshot of the board recruitment and appointment process. The City Clerk's Office and our Communications and Engagement Department issue a call for applications. They issued this call for applications in the summer, but we'd actually already been receiving applications since the spring. And the City Clerk's Office and the City Attorney's Office help us review the applications for eligibility. And then they forward them on to the Economic and Workforce Development Committee. As a reminder, all of these seats are at-large, which is why a council committee reviews the recommended applicants prior to full council consideration. There were 25 eligible applicants. So the chair identified a subcommittee to review that and shortlist, which they did. And then at the October EWDC meeting, the shortlist of applicants were interviewed. And so our next step is for full council consideration of the slate that was recommended by EWDC, which you see here. These are the individuals that are recommended for each of the categories that were referenced earlier, along with an additional recommendation for a training provider or higher ed representative, should council approve that recommendation to add a seat here in that category. All of the individuals recommended for appointment, actually, it's reappointment because they currently serve on the board, but for two, Jimena Sines and John Champion. They would be new additions to the board. The Economic and Workforce Development Committee also asked staff to continue recruiting for the trade or labor organization seat and for the representative serving individuals with high, or serving populations with high barriers. Again, should council approve adding that category. And that concludes our presentation. We're available for questions.
Great, thank you, Alex. And for clarity, the EWDC was briefed on the board, correct? Not on the part that Mike briefed?
Correct. They received that. And they also, just earlier this week, they were briefed on the incumbent worker and on-the-job training round three proposal.
Okay, great. Wanted to make sure that everyone was clear on what they were asked to provide a recommendation on. This is, and thank you, Chair, for being here and providing your opening comments. I know there's, this is one where there's a balance, right? Between how many folks we can help, how quickly, and as you mentioned, this being a new initiative that can be frankly just difficult when you look at some of the challenges, the very intricate challenges of the very population we're trying to serve. I do, before I ask some of the other questions about the presentation itself, I had the opportunity to go to the Community Healthcare Professionals Training Site, which is a Ready to Work partner. And in speaking with the director, all of those folks are reliant on about a $7,000 Pell Grant. So how are we thinking about this program with potential threats to federal funding that actually makes the program feasible for so many?
I think that's one of the beauties of Ready to Work and its tuition assistance funding offered. Many of the programs that are offered
Many of the programs that are offered to ready-to-work are not eligible for Pell or were not eligible for Pell and will not be until the workforce Pell policies and instructions come down to the higher education and training providers. So ready-to-work could help still offset that tuition. But one of the conversations that we can have with this council and with board and EWDC is around, do we need to look at increasing those annual caps to help offset some of the challenges that may be faced if there's any issues with that funding stream being put in jeopardy by the federal government?
Yeah, I think what I want to make sure we're clear about, especially when we're talking about being targeted in certain areas, based on, one, what people want to pursue, but also the need that we have in our community, is that this cost to provide this, all of a sudden, doubles or triples, for example, if that federal funding goes away. And that's important, not only for your budgetary purposes, but frankly, as also we're advocating and working with our own federal delegation about the need to protect those resources, right? So that's why, as we're thinking about this moving forward, there are key facilitators and funding mechanisms that make this more, I think, attractive and help us understand the true costs in certain areas. Thank you as well for laying flat the misconception about, you know, the number of folks that we lose to Houston. I think that was unfortunately something that was repeated wildly, widely, excuse me, and wildly, maybe, based on how you just described. But something that was unfortunately, you know, without the counter of actually, no, here's the data. So I appreciate you all working to get the data that I asked for, which is, how can we ensure they are still, in fact, in San Antonio? So good to hear that, starting soon, we'll be able to check unemployment insurance and determine where our folks actually are. For everyone's edification, the 3,200 that are placed, what is the breakdown between training, OJT, and incumbent worker program?
Those are all training program completers, the 3,200 so far to date. Those are all training programs. They went through an education and training program, and they were hired by our local employers.
Great. So I get that the average salary, once they finish the program, is 44K. What is the median?
The median is a little lower than that. It's about 42K. I don't have that number top of my head, but I can get my data team to get it to us before this meeting is over.
Great. On the incumbent worker training piece, $15 an hour is quite low. And so I'd like to make sure that we are thinking about this program in the context of our other strategic objectives. You just sat through our conversation on affordable housing, right? We know what it takes, even in the ship, it outlines, hey, what does somebody need to make in our community in order to be able to afford a one-bedroom apartment? Okay, so whatever that number is, we take that, the annual, divide it, figure out what that hourly wage is, and that is the very minimum, right? That each of our programs should be supporting, because we know at the very least that that is an amount that somebody can sustain themselves in our community. Does that make sense?
I understand that logic, but the purpose of the incumbent worker training program is to help people who are making less money get skills to make more money. So if they're making only 15, and we help partner with the employer to invest in them so they can have an opportunity to jump to $18 or $20 an hour, then that's the purpose of that investment.
Yeah, I think we're talking past each other. And what I think is important is $15 an hour, by our own data and goals, does not meet what we want to accomplish. So that's why $15 an hour is not the right number.
I agree.
And when we also look, yeah, and when we also look at the wage increase across those, I mean, in each of those, whether you're talking about the OJT program or the incumbent worker program, each of those wage increases were less than 50 cents.
Correct.
Right? So that is also not exactly what I think our community thought they were signing up for in creating these things. So, and again, I know we're early in collecting the data, and hopefully that, not hopefully, hope is not a strategy. We will see increases to that. But that's why tying the wages that we are focused on to the wages we know we need our folks in our community to make at a minimum to be able to sustain themselves is, I think, where we need to be. And if those employers are not at that level, well, then maybe we need to work with different employers.
I concur.
Okay.
But the council, after the first round, requested that we-
The previous council, not this council.
The previous council, correct.
Got it, got it.
Requested that we reach deeper into our small business community. Small business community has a challenge paying $20 an hour, which is where this iteration came from, to help include more small businesses to utilize their resources, to drop that wage for the incumbent worker training, to help people to get skills to make more money. So I just want to make sure that this council understood where that came from.
Yeah. I think it's tough, and I'd welcome your additional recommendations, though. I mean, us subsidizing programs where we see 30 cent increases in wages is not acceptable, because that gets them to be less poor, got it? But not even a goal that meets a goal that we said was important in our community. Yesterday, we had a conversation about, was it yesterday? No, 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 the day before. On, again, how do we meet these goals that are important, right? 90% of folks in an approved job within 90 days. So I appreciate your incorporation of my feedback in terms of how we can be much more targeted. And frankly, what I'd love to see on that board is some kind of lean six sigma expertise, some approach that is just really kind of ruthless in how we understand what we are tying our investments to. So, you know, we've maxed out, for example, on 90% of folks in an approved job within 90 days. Then we go to, okay, what is it at 120? What is it at 150? And so we can always tie in and explain, more importantly, I think, explain to the community why this program is so important and why we might be comfortable with some of the numbers. What I would also appreciate is those barriers that you talked about that are preventing folks from being placed in approved jobs. I'd appreciate presenting those to this body, and a follow-up memo is fine. Because when we're talking about affordable housing, and that's why we put in these points for childcare, we put in these points for transit, we put in these points for et cetera, et cetera. And so if we can tie it back to, oh, by the way, this is also what Mike Ramsey and his team said that they need, that is a stronger case for us, then it's not just kind of our wish list. No, 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 it's our need list, right? Just this morning, actually, I was at, they see, the Alamo Colleges headquarters. Dr. Flores and Dr. Solis were announcing this very key partnership with Avance and Alamo Community Colleges, where, you know, those students that are, well, they're parent students, right? So they themselves will be able to get a good education while their young child also has access to early childhood education. I know Avance Eric was one of the partners, or maybe Mike, that was one of the partners that is no longer a partner. But I think, you know, as they are engaging in those kind of strategic partnerships, they may, in fact, actually be now more competitive, given the pipeline that they are creating as a result of them having that other, you know, help with that barrier, which is frankly childcare. So welcome looking at tapping into that again, given that approach. Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Viagra.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike, for the presentation. I do want to start with a statement written by Councilwoman Castillo, who couldn't be here. So I'm reading something she sent to me this afternoon. "Council colleagues, I'm unable to attend today's briefing as I am dealing with a family emergency and will be back tomorrow." Thank you, Councilwoman Viagra, for reading this letter into the record. "Thank you to Mike Ramsey and the Ready-to-Work team for briefing my office on the San Antonio Ready-to-Work program update and advisory board extension. I expressed my full support for the staff recommendation at the Economic and Workforce Development Committee, and I remain supportive today. I'm especially glad to see the additional funding for the on-the-job training reimbursement for justice-involved individuals. My office is working on a broader incentive program, and this effort will help illustrate the shared benefits of a second chance hiring to employees and employees. Sincerely, Teri Castillo, Councilmember District Five." And I'll enter this into the record. You know, Teri and I came on council together and served on economic workforce and development, and we've seen some very significant projects there. And then we've seen the iterations and the pivots that Ready-to-Work has had to make as we not just came out of the pandemic, but as we led out of the pandemic. And being at this point here today, because San Antonio has traditionally been conservative, and when the airlines came to Texas and said they wanted a hub, and we would train your people, and we would do this, San Antonio unwisely, I would say, said, no, thank you. We've got our military bases, you know, we want to keep our workforce. Whatever reasons, they said no. And so we saw Dallas and Houston get the training, get the beginning of what someone would call advanced manufacturing in terms of the technical skills, while San Antonio, again, found their own way to thrive and really relied heavily on travel and tourism and the military bases to work on that. And as we went through that, and we saw there, we had some very visionary mayors come in and see we needed to diversify in terms of what we did. We've got now the research, what was Southwest Research Institute. We saw Mayor Castro come in, look at pre-K for SA, the cyber, and here we are today. And here we are, and we understood we weren't getting the training, though. No employer was coming en masse like the airlines and training like we needed. So how do we bring together our smaller businesses that are doing well, and our teenage businesses, as some people like to call, and our big manufacturers, which we had gotten here, which was Toyota and, of course, International, and now we have JCV? And how do we provide that workforce? And this, I think, was a very good and innovative idea, but we knew that it was going to take time. And we knew if we were going to lead out of the pandemic, that we needed to promise those 90 days. But it has been difficult, because if getting a population that doesn't think they can or goes home to an environment that tells them, you think you're better than everybody else because you're making more money, makes it harder for them to take the risks. But I applaud you and the program and what you've done. And I know Councilwoman Castillo has been very much, I know the term is justice-involved individuals. And that has been, that's a lot of people in our community. That's a lot of people who sit on the south side of the community. And to get them to be encouraged that this is the better avenue for them, that this is going to help them in the long run, has been a challenge and a process. So as we sit here and we want to say our goals are a $20 thing, that's a hard ask for a public and a community when you're like, but they're justice-involved. But they were criminals before, and I wasn't a criminal. Now they're making more money than me and things like, like, there's just a lot of unpacking to do there. And the small businesses have come to us year after year, saying, I cannot start at that $20 hourly wage. It's just not doable. So what we've done on this on-to-job training and incumbent worker training is for the small businesses, we've told them, hey, we need you to start here and get us up there. And while 30 cents might not be a lot, it's moving them in the right direction. And I think we need to make that decision as this new council, you need to make the decision. We either make some concessions, or we start redlining people. And that's not what this program was about. If you are involved in one of the categories, if you're something involved, you're going to make, we've just seen that. So you're either going to say, no, we all want everybody to start at this equal $20 an hour, and this is where we're going to go. And then we redline some of our small businesses that are out there, because they can't start at $20 an hour. So this is why I like the program. And it's not a subsidy, it's an investment. It's an investment in our community. It's an investment in my youth that were drinking or pulling fire alarms or got in trouble with juvenile, and they're trying to get out, and it's working with them to be. I go to my Taco Cabana, my Taco Cabana employees are tatted up with prison gang tats. That might not be all Taco Cabana, but that's my Taco Cabana. But I'm just thankful that they're there and they're working, or they're at the Jalisco and they're working. And if we can do something to level them up, to keep leveling them up, I want to do that. So I think we do have to make hard decisions in terms of how we're going to prioritize. But it's not a subsidy, it's an investment. These people are an investment, and I want to see that we continue to do this. And I think the Ready-to-Work Advisory Board, because y'all have been through so many pivots, and y'all have seen, that's why I want to see it continue. And we put forward so many reappointments, and we looked and said, hey, the one thing we're getting that I want to guarantee you all is that we've told them, if they're not attending, let us know, because we need people attending. So while it says four years, we're going to tell them it's a four-year commitment. If you're not going to attend the meetings, though, after, I think, we decided so many absences, you're gone and we're looking for a replacement. So we have the opportunity, with the time we have left in the tax fund, to really lead and show what it is to do that when you understand the community that you come from. And my community is the community that, when people have been incarcerated, they have the tattoos to prove it, but they are back at home in their neighborhoods and want a second chance. And I think it's important that we invest and give them a second chance. And I do think, you said the magic words, single mothers, single Hispanic mothers, because I think that's another population that, we did the studies. We know, we know that 50% of our 20% poverty rate, 50% are single women head of households with probably more than one child. And if we even dig further, a parent at home, too. So I think this is the right investment. We need to keep making pivots. But yes, this council does need to make a decision in terms of what we're going to prioritize. And if at this council, we decide, no, it's the salaries, then we'll move forward with that. But my plea is that it is really at looking and investing in the people that are in our communities, and especially in the southern sector, who have been, and that's the thing. We've been redlined before. If we're redlined again, we'll find businesses and ways to move forward. I just would hope that this wouldn't be the council that would do it. Thank you.
In case anyone else has a similar question. The 5K incentive, or each of the incentive levels, what is that based on? Is it based on addressing what the councilwoman just raised in that some of the smaller businesses say they can't pay at a certain wage? So we've done some analysis that shows that 5K is, in fact, what will incentivize them appropriately to hire at that level? What analysis has gone into the incentive?
So the $5,000 is the reimbursement for the training that the employer has already paid for. It's a reimbursement rate. So for small businesses, they'll get reimbursed at a 75% rate if they're hiring a non, if they have a non-ready-to-work participant, that they're upscaling through incumbent worker training dollars. The large businesses would be reimbursed at a 50% rate. So they have a smaller recoupment of the dollars they invested in that individual with the city dollars in return. If the person being reinvested in is a ready-to-work participant, meaning they hired from the ready-to-work pipeline, and they've already been established at that company and looking to upscale them to increase their promotion potential, then those employers get 100% reimbursement of the 5,000. What the council member is referring to is the minimum wage required to be paid to that employee to receive either of those subsidy scenarios, meaning that that floor has to be at least $15 an hour versus $20 an hour, which was the floor in last iteration of the incumbent worker training program.
Yeah, no, I'm very familiar to what she was referring. My question was, how have we addressed the point that she is raising, which is, if we want the small businesses to, in fact, take these folks, right, and pay them at a certain level, what is our level of analysis of the appropriate financial incentive to do that? 5K may or may not be it. That's what I'm asking. What is the 5K tied to? Because I'm sure not everyone's training is 5K.
Yeah, the average training is $1,385 in the last iteration of the program, $1,385. The 5,000 is based on our tuition caps for non-degree training within ready-to-work broadly. We kept it aligned with what that cap was for ready-to-work.
Okay. And certainly, we want to support our small businesses, so in case it, again, informs anyone else's comments. What percentage of the incumbent worker trainer training program is our large businesses, as well as similarly, the OJT? I think Toyota participates in these programs, correct?
Michael.
Good afternoon, everybody. Michael Senden, Workforce Administrator. So for our most recent round two grants that were awarded by you all, a few months- So for our most recent round two grants that were awarded by you all, a few months back, 49% was awarded to small businesses and OJT, that was equal to 49%. And incumbent worker, it was 51% of the awarded funds.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, clarifying that because I think that's another important decision point for this body, which is how, what percentage of, if we do want to in fact prioritize small businesses, what is the appropriate, appropriate number? Some of these large corporations have the resources, and frankly, any large corporation knows you got to set aside 10%, 15% to upskill your folks anyways. But certainly prioritizing the small businesses to ensure they do that is a, is a priority. So thanks for clarifying the current breakdown. Councilman Miki Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start off with good and then a question or thought, and then some critiques and challenges. So one good thing is I did start off with negative perceptions of this program. And I think broadly and as a whole, I appreciate a program that can take someone in a marginalized community that's making $15,000 a year and triple that. And I think that that's where a lot of our effort should be, and especially a number of those, those participants who are typically finding challenges entering a workforce or growing within a workforce. I think it's wonderful that this is a program that's working for them. And so every opportunity we have to find the components of the program that are working and are accomplishing those goals, we should do that. And same, you know, to the contrary, anything that is not working, that's wasting our dollars, we should pretty promptly change that. Can you go to slide, let's start off with slide three. This is a, something I found interesting.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
About to give you all the seizure.
Thank you. So it doesn't look as good on this screen, but I'm looking at it on my computer. And what stands out to me is if I'm looking at income inequality, I can, I can read this as simple as the dark spots are lowest income, light spots are highest income. It's not necessarily the darkest one represents higher inequality, higher income inequality within that area. It's plainly about wages.
Correct.
Okay. So what's interesting to me then is that some of those areas, I'm looking at the East Side because it's of interest, it's of interest to me, but you can look at some others for yourself. On the East Side, you look and you see high income inequality for the vast majority of it. And then you go to low educational attainment, you see that it's actually not as significant and, and especially the further east you go, and even some parts on the inner, inner city. And so I would wonder why that is and what data do we have to answer for that? Because there's something that we have to do to address the fact that income inequality persists despite higher educational attainment. And I could come up with conclusions and ideas of why I think that is. I think it has to do with race, I think it has to do with gender, I think it has to do with a culture that exists within businesses, financial institutions, housing, all of these things that specifically target communities within this, this area and within these certain, these neighborhoods. And so I would love whatever information you could gather that would answer that question for me, and maybe there's some sort of recommendations that we could make pertaining to that. If you wouldn't mind going to slide 13 now. So this is where I'm going to get more into the critique. And I think I, I believe I heard the mayor say this, and I want to double down on it quite a bit because if we're looking at, you know, this program specifically, this component on the job training, we're spending $1,031,073 for essentially an average of 45 cents in wage increases per person. I would like to convey, I think for the future, I would much prefer to see median, I interpret that this as average, average.
Correct.
I would much prefer to see median, just so it, you know, eliminates a little bit of the skewing that outliers do in, in data like this. And so, but based off just this alone, 45 cent wage increase for the 287 participants. That means we are essentially, for 1.8% wage increase, and only 2.4% of employees were promoted at seven out of 287. That's about $3,592 that we are spending per participant to receive 45 cents. That is, that 45 cents, in order to make up that difference, that represents 7,982 hours of work to justify this cost. That's a little under four years. Four years to make up that 45 cents because they participated in this training. And so what that reads to me is that we are essentially handing employers $3,600 to pay an employee a very small amount of cents hourly less. And that to me is unacceptable. It tells me that this entire, I would say, just based off of that alone, I don't know how you reverse that. I don't know how you rework the program enough to where it's not a completely new program by the end of it, because that to me is just unacceptable. And I would, I, I heard you, you did address it a little bit, but if, if I'm seeing this wrong, I would please.
Yeah, the, on the job training, these are new hires. So their income coming into it for half of the 3,200 hires was zero.
Got you. Okay, so it's going from $0 to $24.
Yeah, so not only did they get their first job, they also got a raise within a short period of time. So this is all positive. This is, there's nothing but good stuff on, on the job training.
Thank you. That is extremely helpful because I think I interpreted it the same way that the mayor did when I heard the 45 cents.
And it is on the incumbent worker.
Correct.
Got you. Okay, so that, so that takes me to slide 14, in which I will read you the new, the new amounts, right? So that 73 cents.
35 cents.
No, 30, oh my God. Jesus, not even that much. That's a 1% wage increase.
Correct.
1% wage increase, 6.2% of employees were promoted. That's instead $1,327 per person for 33 cents. That would instead be almost two years of work. That represents 4,021 hours to break even. So on the job, excellent, great. Happy to see it actually yielding some positive results. This one, however, how do you flip that?
That is a challenge. And that's why we're proposing to split the reimbursement on the employers, to make it more likely that they're going to give individuals raises after receiving this incumbent worker training. So is it a guarantee? No, but they won't recoup the $1,300 on average that they've been getting from the program. They'd only get half of that unless they actually offer raises to participants. It's also going to have the impact of with that being known upfront from the employers, you're going to have fewer employers choose to participate or apply because they know the city's got to be expecting me contractually to give these people a raise. In the previous iteration, it was only an expectation, it wasn't contractually binding, which is why we see only a paltry 35 cent increase, in my opinion. It may yield to higher results for that individual with that existing employer that's investing him in the training. Because remember, the, the person is benefiting from these dollars, not just the company. The person's getting a credential, they can take somewhere else. So either they get that raise with that existing employer, or they shop it around and go to find new employment or someone who values that credential more.
Say everything stays, the number stays as is, they only get the 50% at training completion, that's $2,500 that they receive, we're still spending 13, 27 a person and get, it doesn't, it's still not making sense to me.
That's only if they get the max, but we've only seen $1,335 is the average cost being actually expensed through incumbent worker training. 5,000 is the cap. So yes, potentially it could be that high if everybody expensed that. We haven't seen that thus far.
I still say we scrap this one and we start with something else. I don't like it. I don't like it at all. I don't see how that's gonna, I, I don't like it.
Sorry, gotta check with the mayor about that.
I'd love to have that discussion as a body. I'd love to see what other models are working elsewhere. This one, for me, you know, people already have high expectations of ready-to-work, and we see that the areas where we're yielding the best results are not this. And this is likely to give people way more pause than, you know, giving justice-involved individuals a fair chance or, you know, I, I'm not convinced about this. But for the direction that you were looking for, which is the, the board stuff, I'm cool with that, what was the other piece you were looking for feedback on? Was it just that, the structure and the appointments? Fine and dandy on that end.
The timeframe from two to four years, it matches the, the council terms as well.
So if we start off, are we going to, this next round, they'll be shorter terms? It'll end when our terms lapse? Just for this, the incumbent group?
No, it would just be a four-year term that will begin whenever the council appoints them. So that, whenever that start date is, or the council makes the appointments, when that four-year term will begin.
I may recommend just that we change that, like the rest of our appointments that we make, usually they align with.
The term.
Our term. And so I would say that for the first, for this first term, it end where, you know, to align with our, us terming out, and then the next term would start at that point. That's the only feedback I have on that. Again, would love to nix this. Thank you.
Councilwoman Alda Tegavito.
Thank you for this presentation. I do want to thank the board members who are here, Ben, Jennifer, thank you so much for what you all do and all, and all the others, because I know, you know, serving on a board is a labor of love, so thank you for, for what y'all are doing on there. I thank you Mike for the presentation. So just real quick, on slide number seven, you know, I'm glad that the six-month placement has gone up since last year, but it still looks like the 12-month placement numbers have gone down. And, you know, I, I know I said it in the last time we were briefed, it's difficult, it's difficult to know that these folks, whether they were employed previously or not, have gone through ready-to-work and still have trouble finding a job a year later. And so, I mean, that's, that's just a huge red flag to me. And I know that we talked about last time, some strategies to fix it, but it doesn't look like it's fixing it. So I, I do want to call out that opportunity because, you know, I, it's difficult for us to go back to residents who watch this and are paying attention to where their tax dollars are going and letting them know that, yeah, you know, people who go through the program still have difficulties finding a job. So open to any feedback that you have.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a valid point. It's one we've been hearing for a long time. And I would say that if there was a silver bullet, we would have deployed it already. And many other workforce programs that exist around the country would have deployed it already. When you're dealing with populations that have high barriers to employment, it's very complicated. There's lots of variables and each case is going to be different. So we're continuing to try to fight that challenge every day. That's why we have the Childcare Poll to help some of those individuals who have, are single parents, who need assistance with childcare to go back to work. We know that's one of the biggest factors for those people who don't have jobs, is having that child, their childcare needs met to allow them to go back into the workforce and work that job and whatever the, those shifts that employer may require of them. So that's a big barrier, hiring people that are justice-involved. Big barrier. A lot of employers, you know, are very hesitant to do so. We've got a lot of people in San Antonio, a lot of people within ready-to-work who fall into that category, who've gotten that credential, who've gotten that training. We're trying to work the ecosystem, work the employers to get more of them open to the business case for hiring people from that category. They're very talented. More employers have to see the benefit of it in order to bring them on board. We continue to iterate and remove occupations, remove training programs that aren't producing the right outcomes, continually tighten the belt in order to try to make those improvements occur. But those barriers are not going to go away overnight. Those challenges are not going to disappear. Our partners are committed to doing the work, to helping to set people up for success. That's the best answer I can give, and that there's people who go to college, who go to four-year institutions and get a degree and have challenges finding work. Looking at the landscape of our local economy, our unemployment rate is still low, but it's continually to creep up. Last data we got was back in August, once the government gets back and getting those reports out, I anticipate that number being higher, just based on anecdotal feedback I'm hearing from employers and looking at from job seekers who are seeking work right now. So we have to stay diligent because the need is not going to go away.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that that ties to, you know, a lot of the comments made that you've heard me say before. I, I do know, and kind of tying back to what Councilwoman Villagrande was saying, is that, you know, the intent for ready-to-work is, is noble, right? And, and we know that it's not going to be a quick fix. We know that it's not going to be a silver bullet. But kind of to, to some of Ben's points, too, it does get negative publicity. And, and I think that this is one of the reasons why. And so what that messaging looks like or how we get over that, because, you know, we also need to answer to our residents. Our residents are our boss, you know? And it's very hard to say, yeah, they're going through the program and still 12 months later, they're not finding a job.
Yeah, we can shift our messaging. The dashboard may be a mistake. Being so transparent may be a bad idea.
It's not the messaging, it's the number, it's the message.
Yeah. And, you know.
I say that, Mayor, I used, you laugh at it, but I say that because this is unique. You don't see this. Like if you were to take the dashboard away and you were to just put out that 70% of participants have a job through ready-to-work, which is a true statement, it would get a whole lot less scrutiny than it does now.
Okay. You finished your comment.
Okay. So, but all of that to say is, again, you know, what I, where I'm just leaving with you all, the challenge I'm leaving with you all is, is again, that number is, and man, I do think it should be scrutinized because that, that is, I, I hear what you're saying, 70%, but that's putting lipstick on a pig, right? Because we can also say, hey, people go through this training program.
I disagree with the pig statement. It's not that. Like if the impact this program has had on over 3,700 people is nothing to downplay. It's massive.
And I'm not downplaying that, right? But I'm also looking at the opportunity. The opportunity is that there are a lot of people who go through this, through the program and still can't find a job in 12 months. So that's the, that's the target. That's the opportunity that I'm trying to identify. However, whether it's messaging, whether it's whatever, that is something that we need to fix the number, we need to fix the messaging, we need to fix that all around. Moving on to slide eight, when are we going to see the results for, for the new ROI study? What's the timeline on that?
February 2026. It'll be available.
Okay, got it. Let's see. Really, the only other comment I have is, Alex, I'm supportive of the advisory board extension amendment. That's about it. Thank you.
Councilwoman White.
Thanks, Mayor. Can I just ask you something straight off the jump? I, I went and looked back at the economic impacts of ready-to-work for the 2023 report, and then was looking at, I guess, slide eight here, your ROI study, $1.7 billion projected return on investment. And that is assuming, right, that all 3,345 ready-to-work participants that were enrolled, that, that ROI, the 1.7 billion, is assuming that all of them get full-time jobs?
Incorrect. It's based on a percentage, the job placement percentage we had after the first year of the program, and that number of people haven't maintained that job for 20 years. So it's extrapolated out over a 20-year period.
And, and so what, what percentage of those participants were we assuming got jobs?
It was in the study, but I'll have to circle back to you on what that percentage was. But he was using the math of what the actual outcomes were at the time.
Oh, okay.
It was a much smaller job placement number of that 3,300 actual participants enrolled. He was using the calculation based off of those who were getting approved jobs.
So, so where you say over the careers of the 3,345, you're assuming that to get that 1.7 billion, it's, it's a, it's a smaller number.
Correct.
Out of that 3,000 that get them.
Correct. And I say that because if you look at the math on the 3,200 that have gotten jobs already, it's 106 million over the next 12 months. So if you extrapolate that math out over two years, you're at $2 billion in impact over the 3,200, an increase in income and wages alone. And his equation only has 471 million in increase in income over 20 years for those participants. So it's far out of reaching that. His calculation was based off of actuals after the first year of the program.
Councilman, just real quick, so one of the reasons why we're updating that ROI study is because the, the ROI study that the councilman was referring to was done prior to the program with certain assumptions. We're updating the ROI with actual stats of what we've learned, and, and that's why we're going back through that to reconcile back to, to the original.
Okay. And so this new ROI study, we're going to have verified wage and job retention data in it?
That is correct.
Okay. And, and the reason I ask it is because, you know, I, I feel much like Councilwoman Alda Tegavito. I mean, you know, this is now, I guess, the third year that I've, that I've sat in here and listened to, to a presentation on, on ready-to-work. And, and I also feel like we are continuing to try to spin the numbers and, and the, the results of this program to put a, to put a good image on this, on what we've done. And we, we just, we got to stop doing that. If it's scrapping that incumbent worker program, which I think I, I may support because the numbers show that it's just simply not working, we need to do that. I mean, we, we need, I think, a fresh look at what exactly we're doing here. And, and honestly, I mean, I, I, I support what, what the mayor, the mayor's goal for, for 90% placement within 90 days. I mean, to me, that is the, the exact kind of thinking that, that we need when, when we're looking at, at a program like this. I mean, we all said, oh, it started off slow, it's getting better, it's getting better. I mean, I, I, I guess in small ways it is. I mean, I guess in small ways it is, but it's not getting better quick enough. And, you know, believe it or not, we, I think we all get questions about this, you know, in our districts about what we're exactly doing, doing with this money. And it's hard when the statistics show that people are going through this program and still, and still not finding a job. And so let me ask you again the same question that I probably asked you two years ago, that I asked you last year as well. What now is the biggest impediment to placing people in good-paying jobs when we're through the program? And what you've told me the last two years is that it's, the employers weren't, the folks that were going through the program didn't fit what the employers needed. And I've always thought we need to look at this program from the back front, right? It's the only way to look at it. What do the employers need? And then let's train the folks to fill those jobs. And on one of your slides here, towards the end, when you, these scenarios that you lay out, on slide, on slide 20, it caught my eye, you know. No, it's not slide 20. It's the, it's slide 22. Scenario three, job orders only, most direct alignment with employer hiring needs. I mean, whatever the heck we're doing here, to me, that is the line right there. We need to align with what the employers want. But anyways, what's our biggest impediment right now?
It's the same.
It's the same.
That alignment. You got to get it. And that's complicated. It's not as simple as some people may think it is. It's the challenge that we've been trying to address for the last three and a half years that we've been operating this program, is trying to make sure that what we're training for is aligned to what they need. It started with that task force that the city compiled that Alex talked about, getting the employer's input to design the construct of the program based on that employer need, aligning it to the local plan that employers gave feedback into, into what areas are going to see growth here in San Antonio. And you've tried, that led to 80-plus occupations. Now we've got two and a half years' worth of data for what's actually happening with Ready to Work participants. And the Ready to Work Board and our staff and our partners are working to narrow that list down to get it tighter, to get more better outcomes for people to come through the program. That's the work that's been occurring throughout the last two and a half years of Ready to Work.
Okay. And we feel like we're making some strides there?
We're making significant strides. If you see the job placement rate accelerating in just one year, increasing the number of job places by 107% over the year, the two, last two and a half years before, significant growth in job placements. Our job placement rate of getting people in hired at a faster pace is going to continue to accelerate as we narrow the occupations that we're serving, only focusing on ones that are getting the right results for our participants. As we continue to trim down with training programs or getting dollars from Ready to Work, only focusing on ones that are equipping people with jobs, the skills that are going to get them jobs, as we continue that work, then those numbers continue to get better.
And those partners that are in the beginning here, that we're working with to carry, to carry out this program, I mean, are there accountability mechanisms in place for those that underperform?
Absolutely. Our contracts have language in that allow us to dial up or dial back the number of participants going to our training. There are partners that are delivering services to participants based upon their performance. And we go through that list, we have monthly meetings with them, we have performance improvement plans in areas that they're not performing in, and we have conversations about how we're going to get better, what things are you implementing to help to make sure that your participants are successful on the backend. Because again, they're charged with actually working with these participants and the employers to make those connections. Our job is to facilitate that process and hold them accountable to help them to get better.
Yeah. Well, you know, Councilwoman Villagrande made the case for the program earlier, and I agree, I agree with everything she said. I mean, the idea of Ready to Work is very, very noble. And I'm not saying that we should scrap it, but, you know, earlier, I think, I think the chair said this is an incredible program. And if I can take a little issue with that, I mean, I think, again, the idea of it is incredible, but it hasn't been incredible up to this point. And I don't know, I mean, what is the money? We have five more years?
Five more years.
We got five more years. I think now is a really good time to take a, a fresh look at each aspect of what we are doing here to make sure that the citizens are getting their money's worth over these next five years. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilman Galván.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mike and Alex, for the presentation today. I want to start off, I guess, when thinking about Ready to Work, I definitely appreciate the work that the department's been going through and the city's been going, working through this program. It's a tough program, frankly, right?
Oh, yeah.
It is a first of the kind, it is something that was being built as it was being created. And to me, unfortunately, it's on a short timeline. I think when we talk about public health, we talk about infrastructure, these are things that we do all the time, forever, as long as we can have the funding for it. And this one is a limited window, right? And so I think that makes it even more difficult is that as we are working to make this program more effective, we hit the stride as it's midway or further along. And so I just, I always think about that when I think about Ready to Work, because I have plenty of critiques that I'll get to in bits and pieces, but I always think about, you know, if this program were a permanent program, there's always room for improvement versus a needs to meet by this timeline or else, or it's gone. And I don't, and I would like to see ways that we can continue making this effort all the way through, because I think workforce development is truly needed, I think educational achievement in our city is truly needed. I just leave that there. So I just want to make those points really quick. I did have some questions about it. Well, first, I'm good with the advisory board changes as well, so I'll get that out of the way. One of the questions I wanted to ask was, are we still on track with the original goals for the job placement, or the original job placement goals? Or do you foresee that we may need to change some of these goals as we go through the program?
We're continuing to track that. Again, 14,000 enrollments, 5,200 completions, and what the percentage of those completers actually obtaining jobs is going to dictate where we're going to hit our 15,600 job placement goal. We've got 5,000 individuals that are in training right now that are going to eventually be completers. So as we track out, when are we going to hit that goal? If we can keep the pace of job placements and double that pace again next year, then we're sitting here having this conversation with 5,000 to 6,000 placements. And now you're a third of the way to the job placement goal. And it will continue to increase proportionally related to the individuals that complete training. So again, halfway to the training enrollment goal, we anticipate hitting the job placements goal as well as those individuals are placed into employment. I have to put an asterisk on that, that it was, that number, 15,600, is based upon us getting 80% of the training program completers into an approved job. And right now, we have 70% into an approved job within a 12-month time period. So we're tracking 10 points down from where we're at. And overall, 70% of participants who've completed training have jobs right now to date, regardless of time. The 15,600 number doesn't have a time component on it, but at tracking that 70% job placement, we're 10 points behind where we should be in achieving our 15,600 goal.
Got it, okay. That's helpful. I guess, do we track, or do we have any kind of, I'm sure we do track it, I don't know if we have it publicly, or we can get that information about where folks are at within the training? Like, you know, are they 20% of the way there? Are they 50% of the way there? Because I think that'd be helpful too, when looking at some of the numbers that we look at right in the presentation about, here's the folks who enrolled. And it's kind of like, well, that's a lot of people that enrolled but not placed yet or not close to being placed yet. It's like, well, where is that? Do we have those numbers?
On our dashboard, on our enrolled in training section, at the bottom bar, there's a ribbon that shows who's exiting training within the next six months, the next 90 days, the next 60 days, I think even the next 30 days. So you can kind of see that flow of people that are going to be exiting the pipeline during certain timeframes. So that information is there of what's coming out of the training pipeline of Ready to Work.
Got it. Thank you, Mike. Let me see. For the, well, I guess I wanted to ask, because I was looking at those potential scenarios for pivots, what are the, do we have the information about what occupations are currently not meeting our job placement goals?
Oh, absolutely. We have that data. There's quite a few occupations that aren't meeting it, our job placement goal, ones that you would see in our community and believe they're in strong demand. And employer, you talk to a group of employers and they'll tell you we need them ASAP yesterday. But our job placement rates within those occupations aren't where we're meeting our six, 60, our six-month placement goals of 80%, even today. That is correct.
I see.
We can provide you with that list.
That'd be great. Because I think what I worry about with the scenario two on, right, and this point about it, but to make sure that we're still looking at the target, the target industry is pretty much continuing to focus there, right? So it's not just the ones that are doing well, but also still the ones that are in demand in some form that we're still trying to push for. But I guess my question with that is, for the current plan, if we maintain this kind of continued timeline, what, is the gradual removals to the same kind of process for scenario two? Does that make sense?
No, scenario two is a much more aggressive. That is immediate shift, where you're, right now, for instance, there's 70 approved Ready to Work target occupations.
Right.
You know, we would go down to, you know, less than 20 target occupations in that aggressive model, which we need to refine our target occupation list. I'd be the first to state that. I think that there's some occupations that we're just not seeing the right outcomes for, and this aggressive model would get us there very quickly.
I see, okay. I guess I was wondering more so just, is it just ultimately a slower plan than for scenario two, is what I was worried about? Because then it's just like, are we going to get more target focus there instead? Logically, I feel like scenario two makes the most sense to kind of move forward and try to hopefully get to a better number. But I worry about, you know, if we're leaving out some of these other occupations, like in education, or in healthcare, or veterinary tech, or in IT, what happens to those particular?
That is correct. That is one of the threats or weaknesses of the program.
Yeah.
And we know, we hear loud and clear when employer feels like they're not getting the benefit of the pipeline. And they'll be calling your offices and showing up to our board meetings and making sure that everybody hears about it.
Got it. I don't, I appreciate the target, or like, trying to align the targets with EDD or for the economic development incentives. I guess for that one, though, I feel like that's the point of the economic development incentives, that it's supposed to be doing that kind of training. And so I just don't feel kind of that one moving forward with it. I guess, do we expect any cost savings from the scenario two, as well as on the city's side, for the actual training and for our participants?
I don't see any cost savings in that standpoint, but it will be a more efficient job placement track for sure, because they're closely, scenario three is only tied to orders from the employer.
Sure.
Contractually binding orders from the employer. So that job placement rate will accelerate, the volume will decrease, because it's only based on those orders that are coming in, which could fluctuate. And so that's what we'd be bound by would be that in that scenario.
But we would, under scenario, you asked about scenario two, right?
Yes.
Oh, scenario two, I'm sorry.
There would be cost savings. I mean, we would spend less because we would focus on those, on those high-demand only. So the list of, you've got 70 occupations here now, it would go down to in that alternative, 15 or 12?
Yeah.
So we would spend less overall.
Yeah.
With the goal of hitting those, those job placement marks.
Do we anticipate similar participation rates, though? I mean, I know, of course, the initial would be reduced, but do we anticipate still the continued interest in Ready to Work with the focused industries?
I don't think the interest in Ready to Work is going to go away. I think the bigger challenge is going to be the training capacity for those reduced pathways. We'd have to work diligently with our training providers and partners and educational institutions to build more training seats so we can get more people through, so we can mitigate waitlist that may occur.
I see.
If I may, can you pause the time so I don't eat into his time? The logic of, let's get folks into, let's double down on doing the things that are getting people, 90% of the folks in a job within 90 days, let's double down on that. That is, the logic of that is do what's working. The first approach is a gradual reduction of what's not, like, that's eliminating what's not working versus focusing on what is working. So it's completely like the inverse approach of what we're doing now. Right now, there's like 70 jobs that somebody could pick from.
Right.
Like, in my mind, honestly, given the public resources used here, I don't really care what someone's interested in. We, I'm much more interested in what actually works in our community and where people are finding a job, right? So I think what's also important, we haven't talked about what also could make scenario two more successful, is how do we also market? I think there's something really powerful for somebody to read, hey, if I go do this Ready to Work program and I'm willing to do one of these seven things, I'm very likely to have a job in 90 days.
Sure.
And oh, by the way, I would be making 42K. That is very powerful. I'm not sure we've necessarily marketed it, those high, I'll just say, high-success placement opportunities in that way. But that is something I think that would help scenario two.
No, I appreciate that, Mayor. And I guess my concern with that, though, still, is that we're, we're getting placements through, that's great, but then we get back to the point that you started off earlier, right, where we're still moving people in a better direction, but we're still stuck in this kind of same mode of, okay, they got the skills, hopefully, and yet we're still struggling for them, or folks are still struggling to make ends meet with housing costs or healthcare premiums or these other pieces, which of course, we can't fully control those ones. But I worry about the success of our program, saying that we got you a new job and you're still struggling with day to day.
Well, I mean, there are people that, you're right, that right now have a job, that haven't gone through Ready to Work, that are still struggling with those things. So I think that's a conversation that's separate and distinct. But I think what we have done here is at least put them on a path with training, put them on a path to make a wage that increases their likelihood of being successful. The other things, you're right, we have other B sessions to focus on those topics as well. Yeah.
Thank you. I think, I'm stuck between those two for those reasons, right? That I still feel like there is a need and a focus there, especially when I think about education component, right? I think it's a passion of mine, I think about the issue with folks, with the, the need for more educators in our community, especially if we're looking at early childhood and we're looking at pre-K as well, that needing those, those folks in the industry are there, and the occupations are there. And if we're not doing that training, I mean, I hope that work still continues, but there's those barriers there that I think it'd be helpful for us to... Oh. Perfect. Perfect. Then I can really say whatever I want to say.
The input that is provided, can you still incorporate that? Can Mike still listen or not? He has to completely ignore everything from now on.
Actually, he has to ignore everything. No, I'm being, we need to, we need to look at it as the meeting's done. The meeting is over. We don't have a quorum.
That's what I'm asking.
So to answer your question, Mayor, yes, we, input can be heard, but it can't be considered. I know that's an unsatisfactory legal answer, but again, we have to treat it like the meeting's done.
Let me make a suggestion. You could also end this meeting, hold this, and we take it up at council at the very end of council. We have a short council meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
That way, it's in an open session and that input can continue. We can do that as well.
Debbie, is it a recess or is it a, end the meeting?
But Eric, we didn't post for that. So we can't, we can reset. Correct, that's what I'm saying. It wasn't on the, it's not on the agenda, we didn't post it for tomorrow.
What about, Andy, what about what the clerk just said, which is you recessed the meeting, so the meeting doesn't actually finish, it's a continuation of yesterday. So it's not actually a part of a session, it's just a B session, continuation.
Hold on. If it's a continuation of the meeting, it has to be on the same day, Mayor.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay. So when is the, Eric, you'll help us find a time where we can finish this conversation. Okay. Mike, thank you to your team for the, for the presentation and more to, more to follow. Thanks. Yeah, okay. The meeting is 5:30 PM on November 12th, and this meeting is adjourned. Yeah. Okay. The meeting is five-thirty PM on November twelfth, and this meeting is adjourned.